Do you know?
Doing alright.
Oh, get it started. Alan failed. He didn't friggin' gabble.
Oh my gosh.
I can go get a hammer.
How do we get started though? Thanks for being here, everybody. Find out shop here. Do we have all? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven members of the council are here. Go ahead and get started with the committee of the whole meeting. This is a budget focused meeting. As such, we'll start with our budget person to lead us and guide us in this discussion, Denise.
Thank you.
Remind you how we're here, I guess, I don't.
No, it's fine. We'd like to start with the general fund for the council's discussion. And what we'd like to do is first of all, go through a couple of revenue items that I'd like the council to weigh in on. And then start with the departments. We'll start with the council office first. Judges, the judge, so as another elected official to the courts, and then the mayor's office, and then we'll move through the largest departments down to the smallest departments. And what we'll do is I'll just show you a couple of slides I've prepared just for information or reference, and then you can talk to the directors, because that's not my job to answer your questions about what their department budgets are. I really want you to hear that. It's my job for everything to talk about the budget. That's according to Kelvin. So, just a reminder slide, this is the slide that we provided for you at our presentation of the budget, our ongoing revenues, our ongoing expenditures.
Denise, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Because you're starting in on the general fund. What are we going to talk about the reserves?
Um, we can talk about it whenever you'd like. This is your meeting. I am only just trying to help you get one director out of you. But we can talk about reserves immediately if you want to.
I just wondering if you had a slide or, okay, we'll just start here and then when we get some places closed, we can.
So, when I read your schedule, I didn't read that we were going to reach departments tonight. So will there be another night that I can ask questions?
Absolutely. You said your work session.
Work session.
Yeah, we are going to meet as often as you want as a council. We can answer as many questions as you want as a council. We can meet as many times as you want. It's up to you. These are, this is your budget. This is your process.
I just read the tab that you had assigned. Teacher, I just read the tab.
Did she sign it?
She gave us an outline. That's what I looked.
I did have notes.
That was at our last meeting. Yeah, I have a screenshot if you need.
I think I sent out the presentation.
PowerPoint I computed after, but I had already screenshotted what I wanted.
Um, so as a reminder, we do have some limited revenue resource or one-time revenues, if you want to call them that this year. And we anticipate them moving into ongoing revenue in future years. But this year, we are not using one-time revenues like we have in the past. So just aware of that in the discussion. Our expenditures, one-time expenditures are about ninety thousand five fifty-nine now. There are, there is a little bit more, but they're like sprinkled throughout the budget. It was kind of hard for me to get them all out of there. I did notice some as I prepare the next couple of slides. Um.
Do you have a sales tax slide? We'll talk about sales tax.
We are.
Okay.
Yep. So the first thing we're going to talk about is property tax, because I need to notify the county. I kind of let them know preliminary, prelim, okay, I can't say the word.
Preliminary.
That's right when I said it.
Aluminium.
Um, then we would be going through truth and taxation, whether or not you choose to do a tax increase or not. That you would like to have that discussion and that additional time to work on the budget. However, I've not heard that from you formally. So in your budget for the mayor was your three and a half percent property tax increase, generating six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of additional revenue. The revenue would be dedicated or could be dedicated to twenty-eight percent of the increase in public safety costs, but it could go anywhere, right? Your revenue is revenue in this general fund. It's all in the same place. It is just a reference that that's about what it would equal to.
Page fifty last year.
Four point.
Four point eight.
Four point eight, I guess.
Yep.
Denise, could you briefly explain? Apparently just for my benefit, and it's been explained to me before, but if we don't increase sales tax, our rent of revenue just automatically goes down. Could you explain to me exactly? What did I say?
Sales tax.
I meant property tax. Thank you.
Okay, it does not automatically go down. Um, Utah law is just very difficult to understand quite candidly. What happens is, is you get the same amount of dollars no matter what. So if, I'm going to use round dollars. If our property tax was five million dollars a year, you collect five million dollars a year from all of the properties in the city. The city get, the city properties all get reassessed, right? Every year, they take piece and reassess. The value is then divided by five million dollars and you get a tax rate. You're not allowed to collect one dollar more than you collected the previous year unless you go through a tax increase and go through this public process. There's additional dollars for new growth.
Okay.
Okay, so if you collected five million dollars and there were ten homes, right? And their values equal the five million dollars, can't collect more than that on those ten homes. So yeah, you have another five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, that would be added to and become your new base. So you do get new growth, but the tax rate does not change. Your dollar for dollar for amount of assessment is the same.
So I think, but if they assess properties of higher value, then they effectively lower the
The rate.
The tax rate in order to collect the same dollar amount.
Exactly. Yes.
So technically, last year, we actually had a tax decrease, technically.
Depending on who you are, what else.
Yeah, even though it cost people a little bit more money overall, technically, it was actually less.
Yeah, what I love is you can have a tax decrease, but you still have to go through the tax increase process to get the.
You have a rate decrease. And what we saw was last year, we actually saw residential assessments go down and commercial assessments go up, which is opposite what had been happening for the previous three years. Which is why most residents saw a tax decrease, even though we did a tax increase. Commercial properties saw the opposite, right? They saw a tax increase with no tax increase, no formal tax increase, and then another increase. It really depends on what's more valuable within your city. And that value can change between commercial and residential properties. Yeah, it's dollar for dollar. And I think that's the most difficult thing about property tax in this state is that you're not allowed to get one dollar more than you got the previous year, even though inflation has hit you or anything else that hits you. Not one dollar more.
Thank you, Howard.
Excuse me?
Said, "Thank you, Howard."
Yeah, it was, it was something that went into effect many, many years ago. Alright, so council.
Before you.
Help me here.
Go there. Do we have any? I know we're not going to see the finalized numbers for another two or three weeks.
Yes.
Do we have any idea what new growth is going to be?
Um, I have estimates based on what I know right now and averages over time. But I do not know new growth until those dollar values are released.
So the budget right now doesn't include any of the growth?
It does include an estimate.
It does, okay.
Yeah, I did add that. And also, um, I know that there are two large properties that will hit the tax walls, not this tax year likely, but the next tax year. And so I've kind of programmed that into the five years as well, right? We have the Nova Day of the Center and the aligned to energy additional building. Those will add to our commercial tax base pretty well. And so I've looked up other properties that are similar and estimated that property tax in a five-year plan. Any other questions about property tax? I kind of need some direction if possible, or do you want to just delay this discussion? Because we can delay it. I don't need to formally notify. I have let them know that it's likely we'll go to tax. To through truth and taxation, our public hearing date would be August thirteenth, and that would be published on property tax notice. And depending on what you adopt as a tentative budget in the next couple of weeks will be what they will notice for the percentage of increase.
We have to take a formal resolution vote on that.
We would need to, yes, we would need to do a formal resolution and adopt.
What we probably ought to do is, I'd say, so we have appropriate enough guidance with the staff. We probably ought to have some sort of procedural motion that just says this is what we want to do and prepare that for the upcoming meeting.
Denise was asking for direction right now. That's what she's asking for.
Because of that, how about I move? That we because we don't have to vote for us, just I'm going to leave that for the side. I'm going to move. So we have staff prepare the appropriate resolution to notify the county of the truth in taxation at a rate of three point five percent. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Why can't we have a motion to your office? Alright, any questions on that?
Okay, now, once we set the rate, the one thing I forgot to let you know is we can't go up.
You can't go up.
It can only go down. Yeah, so if we want, if you want it for more, then, you know, we can go to five and you can go down to three and a half if you want. But you just need to know that we can't go above whatever it is.
And again, this is not an official vote on that. This is an official vote to prepare a resolution. So it's not a vote on the resolution. It's a vote to write up a resolution. We can still change it before. So all in favor of that, Kelvin's motion say.
I'd like some discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, you're suggesting we could, we could set it at five and then come down to three and a half. What? What are the benefits you see in doing that? Should we, should we consider that? And are we going to, are we going to lock ourselves in at three and a half when we really need more?
Right, that would be the, that would be the consideration. And we, we had done that in the past, where we set it a little higher so that we knew that you would have additional time to discuss if you're wanting to add more things to the budget, or you see something that you want to make sure that you got funded.
But if we go crazy high, we're going to have residents down our throats too.
Exactly.
So, but, so here, the counterpoint. What we're doing is, is having the staff prepare the resolution with three point five. As we get to another couple of weeks, if we want to change that, we can amend that.
Oh, I thought we were locking it in right now.
That, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, we'll have some discussion.
Please, I'm ready to vote to prepare a resolution. We can change that resolution before we vote on it. And I just suggest a three point five as placeholder in the document, because that's what the mayor proposed. If we move along in a couple of weeks prior to June first, if we want to change that, we can, we can change the resolution at that point and do what we want.
My thoughts is, yes.
No, you're good. That's.
That's great.
Great question.
That will probably get us the meeting.
That's why.
Okay, I will prepare those documents for you. Thank you.
We didn't vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You vote. Alright.
Okay, next slide.
Direction to prepare a resolution.
And this is information I know so far. We, these are, this is an updated slide, so this is all of Salt Lake County cities outside of Alta and Brighton. And their property tax rates as of 2023, the orange little lips that you see, those are their tax increases that they've announced with their adopted tentatives or mayor's budgets. So Draper is doing a twenty-one percent increase. West Jordan, we're doing, we've announced three and a half. Emery's announced, they announced nine, but they believe they're going to bring it down to five. So five is on there right now. Draper used to be the lowest tax rate in Salt Lake County, and this will bring them up to be the third lowest. So. And their tax rate will be about fifty-one dollars per household, or it's just fourteen dollars per household. But again, it's because of the philosophy of just bring those taxes up with inflation and don't do those large spikes, because it's just really harmful to your business. Okay, next slide. So we've got three cities that we know of. We are not aware of other cities yet. That doesn't mean that's not. Okay, sales tax. This is, um, as member Green, what you asked for. So this is the same slide. We reverted to our five percent year-over-year sales tax revenue, based it on 2019 as our baseline year. Again, it reduces our risk of reliance on economic spikes, and it allows us to add growth in years when things are level because we're moving that one-time revenue into ongoing. And we have budgeted absolutely level sales tax with what we collected last year and what we believe we'll collect this year.
So now I'm going to ask another question.
Yeah.
I am confused.
Okay.
So, we're talking about this year's budget. The budget we're talking about, we're talking about using thirty million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the budget. Right? When I read your, the sales tax report, and this is where I'm confused, so maybe you help me. But it shows that the budgeted amount for FY 2024 was thirty-one, one ninety-five. Is that, was that the budget? Did we only budget thirty million of the thirty, thirty-one million for ongoing expenses? Okay. So we were actually planning on a million plus. Well, by the time we're done, we'll have a million plus in rep. Okay. Alright. And so the thirty million is, but that's not, is that, that's five percent more than the twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we took the level sales tax and brought it up, and so pretty much we're transferring to that one-time revenue. Because we're only seeing about one point six percent.
But, yeah, so the twenty-nine to thirty is just a small increase that we anticipate. But it's not, okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I knew what I would, I was trying to reconcile the two, two things. I was like, I don't get it, so.
Are, are you still comfortable with that, though? Because what I'm seeing, I mean, even Walmart is saying, hey, we're not earning enough money anymore, so we're changing what you're doing. Congratulations, you all get to move to Arkansas or be out of touch.
Yeah.
So I don't know that I'm comfortable with that, actually.
This is a rough year, and it's rough to know what's really going to occur. If interest rates come down, borrowing interest rates come down a little bit, it'll help that spending. But if they don't come down, what we've seen is interest rates have increased tremendously, and people have gone into debt, and now they're stuck in debt. And they're not able to get to make that movement, so they're not buying as much.
And the credit card defaults have gone up significantly.
Yes.
And layoffs, yeah, yes.
I'll tell you why I'm not worried. Last year, I watched you guys talk about the same thing, like, oh, it's going to be a horrible year, bad, 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 and it turned out, I mean, it turned out great, but it still was at the twenty-nine million. And then back in COVID, it's going to be bad, 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 bad. So every year, I think we're preparing for bad. And that's why this is only thirty million and not thirty-five million. So I, I'm not worried about that. Plus, if it comes, goes to show, we don't always spend all of our money and we have the, only look up to thirty is not going to hurt us. I think we'll be fine.
We do have that leeway of the one point two five million of one-time sales tax revenue at the bottom. So that does give us some cushion still.
Well, there's eighteen million dollars in reserve.
There is, yeah.
And eighteen million dollars in reserves sounds like a whole lot of money, but it's one earthquake and we're, we're done for, because we're not prepared for it.
Well, it's maximum we can have in, in the general fund.
No, it's not. We brought it down.
We, because we were up, we were up. I was going to say, we were up at twenty-four.
No, it's thirty-five.
Oh, it's thirty-five. We were up at twenty-four, we were up a year ago, we were up in the twenty-four million dollar range.
Twenty-eight million.
And that money has allowed us to do a lot of construction projects, because we've had it there for one-time money. If our prior council, which included you Chad, had not chose to be very conservative, we wouldn't be doing some of those big projects. We wouldn't have the water tank for the cemetery that is now going to help with economic development in.
But this thirty million is conservative. Why would it not be?
It is. I'm just saying is a conservative enough. I'm just bringing up.
And it's a good thing we've been planning for the bad, because we're going to have a year where it doesn't turn out, it has been the last few years where we were worried about the worst.
And Denise, the sales tax. The thing you sent us.
It's the revenue report?
Revenue report. Thank you. They've steadily been going down.
Here, here's what I know. Chad, I'm not too worried. Yes, there's eighteen million dollars. Yes, the earthquake or natural disaster is huge. There's also FEMA when that kind of thing happens, there's money that comes back.
And bad organizations, they like trillions of dollars in debt. I don't think we can count on them.
Or there's statement, there's, there's, there's.
Yeah, there are.
And we don't, and we don't spend all of them. Every year, we never spend all this money. Every year is another council meeting. So we never spend it all.
And I never spend all the money that comes into my household in one year. And I feel good about that. And I want to make sure that we have some reserves in the city.
Question, but, but question that I don't think we've ever asked is what do we think? And, and this is where I tend, that, that's where I, where I'd rather have the discussion is whether the eighteen million is right or not. What I, what I wonder is, what is the, what is the council's stance as a policy of where we should be with percentage of the budget for reserves?
It's a question that's been asked every single year I've been on any council forever. That's the question we have every year.
Right, but we don't answer it.
But we don't answer it, and the question is, why not? Why, why, why don't we say that we want twenty percent? Or twenty-five percent or twenty-seven percent? And use that as the target, as the amount to say, okay, the reserves got really big. We went above twenty-something percent. Let's use the extra, the most I've seen is extra money, but you know, you know, use the extra for capital improvement. And we can keep it still at a, at a certain percentage. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And that's what we did last year in our final budget amendment, when I asked for permission to transfer to the CIP. We brought down that fund balance to about twenty-five percent, which was where we talked about being pretty comfortable. But there has not been, and there can be a formal fund balance policy or ordinance or resolution that says as a council, we would like to see our fund balance between whatever, right? The state says somewhere between five percent and thirty-five percent. It's pretty broad range. But if as a council, you say we resolve that we would like our fund balance to be between this and this, that is helpful for you to make those decisions to transfer to the CIP projects.
And I would like to see it somewhere that we have just nine months in reserves that we can run our city. Because I just see that.
One of those.
Right, that'd be fifty-five percent. Yep, we're only allowed three months.
So then we should maintain at least three months.
Yeah.
Almost.
And that's twenty-five percent, that's what we're at.
So if we want to say we want to max out our reserves on the general fund, absolutely. Like, if we want to be at thirty-five percent, always something that we can make is the goal.
And see, for me, thirty-five percent means I'm overtaxed. That means we're, we're actually collecting well above what we need to get to that. Well, about what we need to run the city. So for me, I think I like it twenty-five percent. I think it's a good middle ground. It used to be the max.
It did. It used to be eighteen.
I remember. It was eighteen before it was twenty-five.
Yep.
Blessed state legislature keeps giving us a little more percent.
But that's good, right? They didn't want us coming begging to them. They want us to build our reserves up so that we're not dependent on the state or the county. There's something danger that happens.
The kind of thing that would have to happen, though, for revenues to cease completely.
Yeah.
I think our city operating budget would be the least of our worries. You know what I mean? We would have so much more stuff that we would have to worry about, oh, how are we going to pay the IT department or whatever. It's going to be like, how do we feed people for the next seventy-two hours? I mean, you know, it would be such a massive event that I think I don't, I just don't see any situation where revenue ceases completely for months. And we had a global pandemic.
Okay, so.
Thanks to Amazon.
People want to buy toilet paper, they come to West Jordan.
Well, thank goodness.
Or Target. I know we have a red dot or heavy in the Target.
Alright, next slide. Um, alright, so are we?
Can I, can I just throw out one thing?
Yes.
On, before we move from the general summary. In twenty twenty-three, I tried to look prior to this stack, but prior to this stack, we didn't get much information. So it wasn't there. But in twenty twenty-three in your budget book, we had five hundred and thirty-five employees. In this budget book, we're asking for six hundred and sixty-seven. So you don't have to agree with me, and I don't, I'm really just throwing this out there, because while I agree we need to staff if, at the right levels, I also think that we need to be careful of growing government too much and too fast. And in two years, we have not grown. Our city population has gone, gone up to me to see the data to say that we need that many more employees. So it's just a concern that I have. I just, this is page fifty-eight? Yeah, fifty-eight.
But she's getting the information.
But I took, I took the prior number from our twenty twenty-three budget book is how many employees we have. This is got a count listed, and this one has sixty.
This is pointing before the week cut forty employees.
I was like, wait a second, that doesn't feel.
That, that doesn't feel right. Fifty-eight doesn't show her numbers.
Again, I just wanted to bring it up. You can check it, but that's where I got it out of your budget book.
So page two forty-eight is the staffing document, and our total citywide FTEs are five thirty-seven point thirty-eight in twenty twenty-three, and we're at five fifty-seven by sixty-four.
Can we have page number?
On page two hundred and forty-eight?
On page twenty-four, you have West Jordan employee count at six sixty-seven.
Oh, I bet that, that includes seasonal, that includes crossing guards.
Oh.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, I take them the same number, Denise.
Right, it's not an FTE. That's the employee that we report in the city.
Okay, but I am just taking the same number from your other budget book to this budget book, and it was five thirty-five to twenty-three, and this year it's six sixty-seven.
I think because we've.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine we gained that many crossing guards. We haven't gained new schools.
No, but what I think happened is last year didn't include any crossing.
Two years ago?
Or two years ago, yeah.
I've been curious to know if, if it included them or not.
Becky's better at.
Because I found that number pretty good.
Yeah. That is a good catch. Yes, no. Page two forty-eight will show you our actual FTEs, and it does not include the crossing guards.
I'm not that far.
But I, since, since Kayleen had his turn on page twenty-four, I will just make a comment. I will make a comment on page twenty-four, that we have employers listed. I will just point out that the Utah National Guard employs two hundred and something full-time people and seven hundred part-time, and they're not on this list. Is that because they're headquartered outside of West Jordan?
This list comes from our business licensing, so because they're a government entity, it's difficult for us to even get.
Yeah, but Jordan's school district's a government entity.
Um, we're kind of guessing on that, and it's based on their annual budget report. So we're taking like their total FTE count in Jordan's school district and then dividing it. They won't give us the exact.
It's a good point, though, right? For the listing some government entities, we ought to think about the guard, whether it belongs in here or or whether Jordan's district or what is here. Right, yeah, but no private employers, public employers or something, and.
That's a good note. Thank you. Yeah, that's a good note. Thank you.
Yes, I like that idea.
These, these are hard if they're private. Private, it's easy because they have to get a, they have to pay per employee for all of their employees. So I go to this licensing. When they're public employees, it's really hard to be a shaker.
And we know they respond appropriately.
Say it again.
And we know that they respond actively.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Cause they don't wanna pay any more than they have. Anyway, it was just an house.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, council office budget. We're gonna start with this one. Um, now, uh, we're gonna just close right up front that the council office does have some expansion requests that are not included in your budget because we felt like this is in your purview to review those. So we're gonna review those today, but first we're gonna talk about how the council budget has changed. So the total change from last year to this year is negative nine point four percent. So that's a positive change, right? Um, it's a little bit, um, maybe not a whole story because we did transfer out sixty thousand dollars from the council office for the resident survey and we put it into non-departmental. So that can be managed, um, as a city function under non-departmental.
Then IT is also moved up, right?
Yeah, yep, yep. We decreased IT support. Um, what you also need to know is there was a change in the number of participants and the health plan from year to year with the election and other things. So that reduced cost as well. So the council budget did go down. It's four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and I like thinking about it from this perspective. It is point six cents. So it's half a penny of every dollar of revenue that you collect in this general fund is dedicated toward the council.
You say reduce content, what does that mean?
That means that we don't have as many people taking advantage of health benefits uh, in the council office or on the council.
Denise, someone ask another question. Given the way the council is elected, I was gonna say staff, but that doesn't work right. So given the way the council is elected, is the better number to budget, because we can anticipate major life changes or anything like that. Is the better number to budget the entire council, the seven people with, uh, pay and health and have that set as the budget amount every year? And, and, and not, you know, okay, this year one person didn't do it. Next year it might be two, but the next year all seven, you know what I'm, you know what I'm, is it, is it simp, is it a better, simpler, cleaner budget? If we just budgeted for the, the, the amount, the amounts of money that we maximum that could be. The maximum that we, that we get paid and the maximum that we, uh, could use for health insurance and list that and just budget it.
Um, we could, but you would be taking up some of your revenue capacity, right? So yes, you would understand during the year, but you would also have opportunity cost loss, right? If you don't take benefits, right? You have military benefits. So we save twenty-five thousand dollars a year on you.
But what we could do. What, what we could, but what we could, but what we could do, if that's the case.
You're right.
Is we budget that amount knowing that there's only six to do it and we reduce the contingency fund by that amount.
Okay, but you reduce the contingency fund and you don't have any.
Well, we reduce the contingency. I mean, we can shift from personnel costs to contingency, right?
You can move the budget however you want.
So what I'm saying is, the net effect is that we budgeted for that amount, we account for the twenty-two thousand in a reduction in contingency reserve, but the two numbers are still together.
Let me ask though, how that would be differ from any other department, right? I mean, I have a department of seven and I don't have all of them participating in health coverage either. If we went that way, it would be, we'd have to go citywide and that would take up a lot of capacity of what you could use those dollars for someone. Um, it's super easy if we do have a life event and someone does change, um, their option mid-year. We certainly can come to you for a budget amendment and just ask that. And typically, we haven't heard you say any that options there. But thank you for bringing that up. You're right.
It's not a bad question. I don't.
It's not. It's similar to a cafeteria plan where you just budget the same amount for every employee. And whether they take advantage of it or not.
I mean, the only reason I bring this up is for, for a potential transparency issue is that let's just hypothetically say, uh, six, six council members don't use health insurance. Or all seven. All this, and then the next year is an election year, all seven do. It looks like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget increase when it really, and, and it is, but it's, you, you know where I'm going with that is that.
It swings.
It, 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 it would swing dramatically and it would look like a major increase when it's not. And what kind of message that's sending to the residents? That would be my question.
Um, agree. Except that what you almost always report in your budget book is the actuals. So it would always look like a swing. Right?
Yeah, that's true.
It wouldn't actually be a cost. But great conversation. Yeah. We've actually, Cora and I have debated this, I don't know, every year.
Yeah, we have debated this a lot. We feel like the best approach on this, cause there's lots of small departments and when one employee adds or drops benefits in a small department, it is a big budget swing in that department. But we have felt like the better approach is budget as accurately as we can with the projection and the information we have now. Uh, if we get near the end of the year and, and we need to come for a budget amendment and address it at that time, sometimes that stuff comes out in the wash. One, one employee's better, one employee drops benefits, another one takes the benefits and has major life experiences and ends up balancing. So we, um, we feel like by budgeting as accurately as we can on benefits, if it keeps the resources in the budget available to be appropriated where the council has and the mayor has the priorities. Otherwise, we tie up some resources in budget numbers on benefits that we know are only gonna be materialized at a sixty or seventy percent rate.
Okay, next slide. Oh, and also, I'm sorry, fifty percent of the costs of the council office are transferred to development services and utilities because about fifty percent of your time is really discussing development utilities, right?
What's not? It's about ninety-nine percent.
Okay, that's probably true.
Mine would stop developing in the city.
All right.
I couldn't resist, Scott.
Um, all right. So the expansion requests that I received from the council office for your review, um, are two and they're both related to Prime Gov. So we're gonna turn the time over to Alan so that he.
Thank you.
Hey, Alan.
I will send it. Okay, so, um, we use Prime Gov as an agenda management software and um, there's two modules that we could add. The first one is, is a committee manager. I've got some, uh, some items here that I can show you some screenshots. Right, right now what we do is, um, we have a website.
Bad glare. Is there a way to turn off these front lights or? Are dimmed, yeah. Yeah, I'm like this trying to read it.
Um, the, so right now what we have on the website is a page that gives all the committees and granted some, one of the committees are executive branch committees now. Um, but they give the, an email address and a phone number, who to contact to be involved with the committee. And then the, the staff member um, sends them applications, collects resumes. So there are a lot of people involved. Commitment manager allows the residents that want to participate in the city to apply online, just like you enter a form into Prime Gov. Anybody who enters a form.
It's gonna be the middle panel. Yeah, right. That's helpful.
Um, so, so committee manager allows a, a resident who wants to participate in the city to go online, enter a form. That's the application. They can attach a resume, just like they have, uh, Richmater, Prime Gov can attach a document. And it has a workflow. So if it's, uh, if it's the sustainability committee, it can go to, uh, Mr. Campos, the mayor, the general plan committee, come to the council office. And those, those are kind of automated. So it kind of reduces the human resource gap. Residents that are interested can apply online at their own convenience. They don't need to do it during Monday through Friday business hours. Uh, the executive committees could workflow through the mayor's office, the general plan, um, through the council office. It also has a reporting tool. So of all the committees that are in the city, uh, there's a report within Prime Gov that you can see what's vacant now. And you can see what's going to be vacant at least sixty days in advance. And it's one, one location. Right now I'm aware of at least two or three Excel spreadsheets to kind of manage who's serving in what capacity. It also has a location where you.
That's nothing compared to Denise's spreadsheet.
It is.
Seven thousand years.
Four hundred and sixty-two lines. One thing committee manager also does is it provides a committee, um, area for location of documents. So if a committee has bylaws, if there's a charter council rules, for example, we can stick it in the committee manager under council rules. And I've got some slides here. Uh, this is a sample page. This is not activated yet, but it shows the committees and airport advisory, the redevelopment agency, which of course all of you. Uh, the board of canvassers, which are also all of you, the design review committee. And you can see at the top there, there's three tabs, profile, which is, um, on this page is the city council where they meet, who the contact person is. And eligibility, they're elected by the registered voters of the city of West Jordan. There's a list for members and then any vacancies that would appear. This is another city that uses, um, Prime Gov committee manager. This one is activated. You can see that they have meetings. So I can go look at the airport advisory committee meetings, like the lots of redevelopment, design review, any of those just within Prime Gov like any other meeting. Um, and then this one is the zoning and design review board. This is in another state, uh, using it as well. And you can see down at the very bottom. Their zoning and design review board handbook is listed, uh, as a PDF. And the logo they use, you saw our logo on our page. This one has the seven elements that are required in their government code section, land use safety, circulation, housing. Um, and you can see they have additional tabs at the top, profile of what the committee does. The members of the committee, vacancies that exist, if any, uh, the meetings they're having and, and documents. This is kind of a reporting. This is a sample from our, uh, it's not activated. Uh, but it shows the council members, their terms, when their terms expire. You can see the council member, council chair Jacob is in another term with this U. Um, council member Lamb, Bedore and Shelton are in their first term and you can see council member Blue, Green and Whitelock are in the middle of their term. And this would be for planning commission. This would be for airport advisory. This would be um, healthy West Jordan, any committees that the mayor wanted to create. But it's all handled internally and any Prime Gov user would be able to see this and, and, and public would be able to see it on the, on the public portal page for their meetings. Um, and so that's, that's committee manager has a, a one-time cost of about nineteen hundred, I think. Uh, I'll go back to the slide. And then an ongoing cost of about nine thousand a year. I believe that would free up, um, Mr. Campos. Our, Mr. Campos a lot probably. And then you need to be able to do other things. It's not necessarily a, a cost reduction, but instead of doing the manual intensive labor of collecting applications and resumes and getting them to the right people. He could just go into Prime Gov and be able to push those to wherever they needed to go. So this time would be more free to do other tasks.
So how much of this would be for the council office and how much of this, cause most of what you've said is the mayor's office. So perhaps it should be under the mayor's costs, not ours.
Agreed. And I assume the, since the council changed, uh, title two with the executive committees. This was going to be my first priority, but since those amendments and it is the mayor, um, it was still in the budget. And it's, and it shifted. So this is now my second. It's not primary, but it was included when we assembled the budget back in. So the one-time cost for committee managers, about sixteen hundred and then the annual cost would be about ninety-one. For the committees. And I don't disagree with the council.
Are we, are we fully using Prime Gov with what we're already paying for? Have we fully implemented and are we using it to its full capability while we're already paying for?
Um, the answer to that question is kind of asterisk, no. Um, there's an element in Prime Gov, I'm being, I'm being honest. There's an element in Prime Gov with Laserfish. Um, that with the, um, cyber incident that was last June. And the move from temp city hall to remodel city hall, the IT team has not had the capacity to put necessary time with Prime Gov. I have worked with Prime Gov to, um, give us a credit on the Laserfish integration for one year. So that is being credited back to the city. I've asked for that. Uh, because of, of, it's kind of on us to do. And I've communicated with IT that it is something now that as we get city hall back up to its capacity and, and they have the, the time to work on getting the Laserfish integration. Uh, that we would pay that going forward and we could integrate Laserfish. And what I mean by Laserfish integration is all the records that Ms. Sloan keeps track of for the city that we're required to do as a city reporter. Those are stored in Laserfish. Once we have that connectivity, any user of Prime Gov can go into Laserfish and pull historical documents. So if you need a, a resolution from twenty sixteen, we can grab it. If you need minutes from twenty twelve fairly quickly, we can go in and grab it with that Laserfish. But that would be the asterisk that it's not fully implemented. We're not using Laserfish, but I have requested, uh, us to have a credit since we don't have that capability.
Are you using, do we know if we're using the meeting, the meeting manager module?
I am, I am meeting, uh, Granicus on Tuesday in person and I will have all that information. I do believe we are using meeting manager, but maybe not the, the whole capacity, not because we don't own it, but because we don't have, we haven't signed in to all of those elements of meeting. And I
I actually think, I, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Kidney's question. I, we and this isn't a ding on the council office. I want you to understand. We had, we, we, we tried to implement Prime Gov during the middle of COVID. And normally in an implementation in a software like that, people come out, they walk you through things, they do all this kind of uh, not, what I'm just saying, not so tasty Cory, not his head. I mean, Scott probably had the same thing with city works and some things. Did they just leave you high and dry? Uh, but, but sometimes, sometimes normally in a software implementation, you have some really good people sitting down next to you and we didn't have that. And so I'm wondering if we're missing some of that. So that's part of my discussion on Tuesday with the representative from Granicus, who will be in city hall with me and we're gonna talk about a number of things.
So my question would be to the mayor and the Corbin. If we expend the money for this. No, 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 let me rephrase that. We're talking about it, but as council member Whitelock points out, this is with the way we change the ordinance, this, this more directly affects the mayor's office as opposed to does the council. Is this something you want? Is it something that's useful or do you not want?
Is it useful? Yes. Would replace our three Excel sheets. Probably a lot more than three, actually. Yes. Have I calculated the, the value of that? No, but I think there is a value to it. If you wanted to take it off of your budget, but in ours, would I accept it? Certainly. I, no, I think there's advantage to it.
We're not advocating for it.
We're not advocating.
It's not, it's, 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 we would use it if you got it, but we're not advocating for it. We would, I would frankly, we, our, our software costs are big. One of the things we're doing this year is auditing all of our software licensing. All of our software uses to try to manage and rein them in a little bit. This is not where I would spend the next nine thousand dollars. To say, if we're not gonna use it, let's not do it. If, if we had it, we would use it, but.
Would, would, it's, so when is your software audit gonna be done?
I don't know. But we're, you know, it's probably six months at least. It's gonna take some time. I mean, it's big. Uh, we've got, we have, you know, every department has lots of software and
Or not enough.
There's all kinds of software solutions that are posed, but can we take our existing software that's already licensed and get it to, get it to.
Get it to fulfill needs rather than buying more and more softwares. It's tricky. Um, so the mayor's right, like if we had it, we would use it, yeah, but I'm not advocating for it.
Would, would you want to, after you had the software audit and you've got a better vision of what we got? Would that be a better time to have the discussion?
Yeah.
Maybe next budget.
Yeah, that'd be a good time to have the discussion.
So then for Mr. Anderson. What is the advantage to the council office? Because mostly what I heard is an advantage to keeping track of volunteers and. That's not under us, so.
It helps us, um, it helps us with the council office, making sure that um the seats that you. Do for the statutory committees like the planning commission, that we're putting people with the right end dates. So it, it gets complicated when. Well.
I think that's still under the mayor, though. We.
Well, but it, but it wasn't at, at before you amended title two.
Right.
Right? But the planning commission will still be. Advice and consent of the council. We have to create resolutions that you adopt, appointing them to the planning commission. That have expiration dates.
But is that a nine thousand dollar justification of the office?
Well, there's, there's been a number where we've had to double check and edit the resolutions. Um.
Yeah.
Because, and so it's time for us.
Is it a nine thousand?
But isn't a nine thousand dollar ROI for that?
I would say, I would say now with the amendments, title two, it belongs more in the mayor's office. The only one that really impacts us is the general planners. For that solely.
Well, we're probably going to start it back up this summer and and look at it in the short term. But those kind of things now, if we do this right, it's a short-term committee, right? Update these two chapters and do a short-term thing instead of the big long process that we were doing in the past. We'll do that through the next five years to show.
To me, it seems like it's more appropriate in the mayor's budget and they. Mr. Lee doesn't. Want to expend the funds there. So I would say, what's your other one?
The other one is another Prime Gov module. I'm kind of like Mr. Prime Gov. Um, and that is.
They got kind of like Mr. Prime.
The, they purchased a company called Swagat Ease. And if, so right now. Let me back up a little bit. Um, right now, when we do our meetings such as this one, now with the, with the uh. The caveat that when the, the cyber incident occurred last year, we stopped streaming directly to YouTube. So YouTube is usually the next day when we upload the video. Uh, for YouTube, but right now, uh, you can participate on Zoom. And if you just want to view it, you can watch it on, on YouTube and it's the same video. Basically, you upload Zoom to YouTube. That would go away and Swagat, and I'll, I have some samples here that I can show you. It replaces YouTube. It provides a single user interface with transcription, closed captioning, agenda packets and video on a single page that's on the city website. You're not going to YouTube to watch this. It does. The same view for the residents that they see if they were watching tonight, or if they wanted to look at this, this meeting recording six months from now, it would look exactly the same as far as the format. I have some samples there. They have some options for transcription. The less expensive package, uh, they do it post-production. It takes three to five days to do the transcriptions, which I'll, again, I'll show you the pictures. And it will be pictures worth a thousand words. The more expensive option does live transcriptions during the meeting, and you can actually search the video by transcription. So if you're looking for. Uh, what a developer said about some housing project, you can find it in the transcription, click on it, and the video will immediately go. Where that is. Um. There, based on the ULCT, there was a few council members discussed, maybe zoom meetings could transition back to just staff and council members because you can watch it on. Um, on the Swagat with Prime Gov. It's basically watching on a Prime Gov. And having um maybe residents come in council chambers to make their public comment that, that was talked about. Uh, residents can view minutes, transcriptions, agenda packets, like I mentioned, in one location, and the video is closed captioned and and obviously the transcription. So what that looks like. Um, it's ADA compliance for the, the captioning. This is the city of San Antonio that uses this, and you can see uh with the video, now they, they pay extra for sign language. Not proposing that, that does that, does, this sign language translation is not included. I'm not talking about that, but they do it. Um, you can see that there's a video index underneath the picture. You can see the post-captioning, and again, the, the more expensive package, that close captioning would be live. And then on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the agenda, just like we have now. They can download it, they can view it just like we do now. See, there's a share this video where people can share it on social media. Here's where the council talked about. This. Or that. And there's the, here's where the mayor of San Antonio. Uh, Mayor Narenberg, and you can see in the bold there in the transcription, that's what he's saying at this, this part of the video. What Swagat Ease will do is when people want to see our meeting, this is the meeting that they would see. Is this a screen similar to this, different colors, but. Video, uh, video index, agenda packets and transcription. Okay. Um. If they want to go look at a previous meeting from. Twenty, well, when we're using Swagat. So someone wants to look at this meeting six months from now. This is the exact screen that they would see is the video, the video index, the agenda packets. And the transcription. Um, and the two options of Swagat, there's one where the captioning of the, of the transcription is done post-production after the meeting is held, it takes three to five days. The other option, it would be done live. And on that one. The. Post-close captioning would be English only is what they can do. The one-time cost to get it is eighty-two hundred. And the ongoing cost is about two thousand a month. For those, those features, if you want to do it live. Um, there's some hardware that we have to get. And that's where that ten thousand on the one-time cost to be live closed captioning. And then the ongoing cost would be about thirty thousand, so just a little bit more for that. The advantages, we're currently, a couple of advantages. We're currently paying, um, I want to say about five or six thousand dollars. To have the license to YouTube to stream our council meeting to YouTube. That would go away and we would use that to offset. These costs. So.
So we'd go up twenty-five thousand?
No, 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 no. The. There's YouTube, we're paying about five thousand dollars, so it would, yeah, it would decrease to twenty-five thousand.
And that's thirty.
If, if a bigger package or if we did this.
We don't need a bigger package. There's enough out there. I, I just come with someone with hearing loss. Um, there's enough. I, I have. What you call it, the things on my browser that any video is automatically closed captioned in the language I choose. And it just takes two seconds to download. So I don't think we need the in-live, in my opinion, because there's so many free options out there. And we can even say that if you need closed caption. Use third-party or whatever. Um, so I don't, that's why I feel I don't need, we don't need to be sold on the bigger package when there's a lot of free options out there.
That's why I'm giving the two, the two packages, the post-production and the live.
Yeah.
And I think what this does is like I mentioned, the, the resident-centric.
Yeah, the accessibility, hundred percent.
Makes it easier. And we have, we're not, we're not offloading, I don't want to say offloading, we're not, we're not uploading our video to YouTube, which is not. Our site, right? It's not our city site.
Well, when you upload it to YouTube, we don't know the video and stuff.
Correct.
And. Yeah, so.
I'd like to understand better. The.
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
Benefits of moving from, from YouTube to, to this service. Um. It's searchable. That's one benefit you talked about, like you can search the, search the minutes.
Well, right now, a resident needs to, they can see the packets. They can see the attachments. They can see the minutes on our Prime Gov portal, or portal. But they have to go to YouTube to watch the video. They can't see the YouTube on our port.
Inside the portal. So would you say that's the main benefit?
And I, the way I understand this too, the other thing is the agenda. Right now, if you go onto Prime Gov, right, you click on the agenda, it jumps to Prime Gov to where that actually starts. So the video is indexed, right? If you do that. Then with this one, the transcripts are already there and the transcript's going right along with the video that you've watched. So that you, the, the, the transcript would be indexed and a couple other things. That's, that's the way I understand that, I understood that.
And that's, those are my only, the only request I had was Prime Gov and Swagat.
So my thought. I, I'm not. I don't really, the cost isn't that much, but I don't really care if we have the post-close captioning versus the. The, the, the live closed captioning. If we do the transcripts with, with Swagat Ease, if we do the transcript, that also eliminates the person that we're hiring to do. Transcript.
Is it worth two thousand dollars a month?
What should we pay in that person?
It's, that's, right now, it's, it depends on the hours and length of the meeting. So this meeting will be a little more expensive. The budget is thirty-five hundred a year.
I do want to remind everyone, when we took Cindy from the mayor's side to our side. Part of that was she was going to do our minutes, so.
Right, and then we went to three meetings.
Yeah, I know, but. We, part of my, we're growing government awfully fast in our city.
That's what also applied to the planning commission. It would reduce costs for the planning commission.
I didn't, I didn't include planning commission into this.
Whenever you buy in the module.
Yeah, the one, the one-time cost would work. The ongoing cost would increase for however many meetings.
So that's for three minute, three meetings a month.
Three minutes a month.
Oh, so it'd be more.
If we add.
But that's not, that's, that's not my.
I think the utility. Of this would be. To eliminate. Outsource, outsourcing. Try outsourcing minutes. I think Prime Gov can actually handle minutes.
Changing where we're outsourcing the minutes to.
Well. No, here's, here's, here's my point. Oma. Only requires. Some very restricted things on minutes. We have had the. Attitude, philosophy, whatever you want to call it, that we dang near want a verbatim transcript as our minutes. I think this would provide us. Good paradigm shift. To say minutes are what Oma says. If we want the transcript to get all the nitpicky details, we go here to Swagat. The minutes are the official minutes based on Oma. The transcript is what Swagat Ease creates. And I think it creates a better. Process for us because the minutes then are exactly what state statute requires. And, and we can, we can do those more efficiently and not try to have somebody transcribe an audio tape. That we've been doing for the last. Decades, um, and get away from transcribe, and get away from transcribing meetings that. Honestly, we don't use the transcriptions that much. That's where I see this.
So someone will still be doing our minutes, plus we'll have to.
Because, because, because Swagat won't be the official minutes. But the, but the official minutes, and Alan can check, but the official minutes should be. I mean, it's very, the minutes.
Kind of what Julie worked out.
Almost more like what Julie, the, the minutes can be, so the minutes can be.
When do we start calling them hours?
Yeah. But, but, but the minutes are, are under Oma are fairly simple. Cindy can do, she almost does them now with the. With the summary after the, the meeting, probably needs about two things, and that becomes the minutes. With what she's doing now, and this just becomes the backup and would help with minutes. Honestly, I, I like the live, and now, now that I'm talking myself into, I like the live. Because if the live is being transcribed, if we make a motion, there's all of a sudden the transcript of the motion there, and Cindy's got it, cut and paste it, put it into the motion. If that can, I, I, is that going to save us four thousand dollars a year in time? I don't know. Um, but uh. I like, I like this because it is resident-centric and I'll, it, it, it is resident-centric. It puts everything in the right spot. And I think it's, it gives us a transition and I'll just leave it at that.
That's all I have uh for the presentation.
What kind of shift do we get on this? Impact.
If it's, if it's, if you look at YouTube, but I'm used, a typical meeting is fifty to sixty views when there's something that's controversial or. Something that, you know, people start saying, hey, you gotta see this. Uh, we've had them up to the two and three hundreds.
What'd we get two hundred for?
I seriously should have gone in to go on the software.
It sucks.
So what?
Software in general.
So how would you like, how would you like me to proceed?
I'm torn. I, I just feel so excited for an ongoing cost when a lot of this can be done with AI, since I do it. That's my only issue. I just feel like it's a lot of money.
You gotta know.
I know.
Yeah, but AI does the story for saying, I'm not hearing any yeses.
But I like the accessibility and that's.
Most of yes. So I wouldn't say no one said yes.
I might yes in the fact that I'm just going to trust that. Staff decided this is where they need it.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. I just.
I'm in that as well. I, I think giving. If we're looking for transparency, what we do, the meetings, having people being able to be easier, go through and find what they.
Accessibility.
Have, that makes it seem a lot more transparent. If we go to YouTube, it just doesn't seem like. You know, it's, and it's one of those things too. I'm just going to say, if we want to be a city with a seat at the big boy's table. Uh. Free and YouTube just doesn't sound like a seat at the big boy's table.
Hey, so what does Salt Lake use? What does Austin use? What does St. George use? What does Oregon use?
They use, they use different software. Um, Salt Lake City uses Prime, Salt Lake City uses Prime Gov, Sandy uses Granicus, which owns Prime Gov. Um. I'm not aware that any of them use Swagat.
What's the price point compared comparatively for something like this, other, other companies, other brands that do the same thing?
Uh, this is, this is, this is the best software for agenda management. Because I'm.
No, it's a, it's cost comparison.
To the others.
What?
To the others.
Yeah.
This comparison compared to what some of the other cities might.
I, I haven't looked at what other cities.
We got the RSP a couple of years ago.
Swagat's integrated with Prime Gov.
Swagat.
Swagat is owned by Granicus. Granicus, who makes Prime Gov now, owns Swagat. And this is their video production module for Prime Gov.
I have worked at companies where we've tried to Frankenstein the software.
I'm not saying to Frankenstein. I just wanted to know, are we paying a whole bunch more for something similar to another city?
You're, you, you've got a, you've got a good product. Um, Gran, Granica, Granicus has the one that uh Salt Lake County uses. I just, Ledstar.
Start in Sandy also.
And Sandy uses it. And Granicus bought Prime Gov out so they could switch theirs to Ledstar and Prime Gov. And, and the other thing is, I mean, this is true. Relative to the budget, it's just small. I mean, it's a lot of money. It's just a small amount of money. But. Like keeping it integrated, a couple of years ago, we decided that the agenda management software or something we wanted to invest in, we might as well get the best.
Which is what they count on, so you go. That's what I'm saying. They nipple a dime, they get their programs, they sell it to us, and we're like, all right, let's fork over another thirty grand.
Well, and, and rein back for.
If you truly feel this is going to make your office more efficient.
Yeah.
And help the residents, then I will give you a yes. But I have to know that you truly feel it is going to make your office more efficient. And help the residents.
I believe that it would help the residents first, and I believe it would make the office more efficient second.
And I probably was being, being a little dismissive. It's just, I, software companies are doing this and it deserves me, so it's nothing against you. It's just the whole model.
I, I get it.
And I was happy to hear from council member Bloom because I was thinking, oh, this might be good for Pamela. But. She said we don't need that one, so I will not be happy with the higher cost one.
There's so many free live transcriptions.
Well, that's fine, and it will be just like the live. Well, that's fine, and it will be just like the live transcription.
But just three days.
It'll be three days later. So, you know, the residents, they need the transcription or they needs the captioning, they would just have it three days later. But, you know, the the purpose of this request, these two requests was simply, number one, resident centric, looking for outcomes. Not so much, I mean, I am looking at dollars, but where is the outcome? I don't want to do something that's just, hey, this is cool. Want to do something that residents can say, this helps me know what my city council is doing. I I have ease of use of accessing packets. And what I will tell you, somebody may not remember this, when I started in twenty twenty, um, the packets were printed, web signed, scanned. And the scan was stored in laser vision. It took us, it took us almost six hours to produce a packet in twenty twenty. Within six weeks of my hire, we moved to Adobe Sign. So we didn't have to have all people in to drive from public works to sitting hall to put an ink on piece of paper that we were very just scanning. Uh, and then from there, because of limitations with Adobe Sign, which with the size of documents, um, that's when I started exploring, um, what other cities use. So some cities use OnBase, Provo uses OnBase, but I have a price out that they were. Um, Salt Lake City uses Prime Gov, just like we do. Um, and Sandy and, um, Salt Lake County use Ledger Star, which is a separate product from Prime Gov. Can't remember.
Granicus is owning off a lot. Sounds like they're becoming a monopoly.
They already got us, yes. They bought them out to, they bought them out to to change because Ledger Star is not as user friendly as as Prime Gov. Microsoft's never done. So. Anyways, so was there four?
We got four, yeah.
Okay, so for the, for the post, post-production closed captioning, less expensive. Okay. That's, that's what I've got.
Okay, so we're gonna hit the justice courts next, which there's really not much change.
That's all decided for you, boys and girls, so move along. That's what we learned was that last year or the year before.
Um, it is increased four point three percent, um, which is, uh, the majority of that's the cost of living increase and, um, merit increases for the employees that work at the justice courts. And then, um, the budget is a million fifty thousand, uh, one point four percent of the general fund revenue. And they do bring in a million dollars in fines and forfeiture revenue.
So you can't, can we direct the judge to create that he has to come up with?
A million fifty.
A million fifty, four hundred thousand, four hundred and seven thousand dollars in fines.
Um, we should not do that. And there are no other changes, so if there's no comments, we'll be sorry. Okay, next slide.
I do have a question for the justice court.
Okay.
That's too late.
It's somebody here.
I do have a question on the justice court.
Okay, I'll answer it.
Uh, do we have a plan? And Mayor and Cora, you can probably help with this one. Do we have a plan to finish the second courtroom?
Not when some of the changes that the legislature is making with justice court.
Do we, are 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 we?
Our case filings have been flat to declining, uh, over time, so we haven't felt the need to grow the justice quarter out of the second courtroom.
But isn't.
We have explored. We have explored occasionally, uh, partnering with other cities and another city leasing that courtroom for us or, um, sending cases our way, but we have, none of those have been very serious. So right now, there's no plans to finish them.
But does, doesn't Justice Coons caseload such that in most other cities, there's two that handle that? He likes to do it by himself. What I don't want to get stuck with, and this is what I'm looking at, what I don't want to get stuck with is somehow Judge Coons resigns. We end up having to hire two judges and we're not ready for that. Judges could do the same for him.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we, um, I think we're fine on that. I think our caseload is, is our, the AOC, um, recommendations would suggest we needed one and a half. But there's lots of ports that have more caseload per judge than we do, and so we're, we're doing all, we're doing fine.
What, what's your hypothesis is why we're flatter declining?
We're not writing as many tickets.
God, Ken, what's your pro?
Our population is going up, so it.
So that, well, and our officers, we don't even get into that, but, uh.
That's the next department.
You know, our total caseload, most of that is traffic cases, and those are, those are flat.
Well, we can lower it more. We just won't okay those motorcycles.
Well, there's a there's a lot of reasons for that. We, we'll get into that with the police budget we talked to.
So you mentioned the AOC said one and a half.
Um, now, the AOC has, um.
Their standards.
Their standards, yeah, but those are, you know, those are ballpark recommendations.
Without Judge Coons being here. If I recall state statute. Even the justice courts can have Judge Pro Tems for small claims actions.
Yeah.
I don't, i- i- I don't think we've ever explored that. Do we, do we need to explore, maybe to to help meet the AOC requirement? Do we need to explore a a pro tem, um, situation? And if so, I mean, obviously, we have to have some court security there, um, uh, and those kind of things, but have we ever explored that? The question is, do we need to explore that as a potential solution for two judges, not one with small claims issue?
So I I have, uh, I have a meeting with Judge Coons tomorrow. I'm happy to address that, ask him that. Um, you know, I've done that in the past. If Judge Coons were to retire and we were to get a new judge, it would be a good time to have that expiration as well, but I'll ask the judge tomorrow.
But you know, it it, I I think it's something that if we ask now and we're proactive, then when, if we do need to do it, we've got things in place or we can start now, those kind of, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, our next department is, um, city administration, which includes the mayor's office, public affairs and economic development. Change this year in city administration is fourteen point nine percent. You can see the percentage of the general fund for these three departments is two point three percent. Um, we have a few things that have changed. We've transferred the community outreach manager from the mayor's office to public affairs. That's neutral. That just means that the FTE just shifted from wire to the next in the same division department. Um, we transferred employee recognition and service awards to non-departmental, so we took out of this budget and moved it into non-departmental, thirty thousand dollars. And, um, at this time, forty five percent of the mayor's department and thirty percent of public affairs are transferred to development services and utilities. You go to the next slide for me, Alan, for a minute? There are, um, three expansion requests included in these three departments, but one is a communications specialist, which is a full-time employee, the ongoing cost of salaries and benefits based on a family coverage. And one time costs a computer. We have a CAO intern. It would be a seasonal position, year to year, um, sixteen thousand dollars of ongoing cost. And we did receive a five thousand dollar grant that's included in your revenue estimates this year from ICMA. And then site visits for economic development, and that's a one-time cost of seventeen thousand five hundred. And those would be used on an as required or as requested basis. So if you wanted to go somewhere onsite to see a particular development or how redevelopment occurred or how, um, those kinds of things. So it's just educational. Uh, those are programmed into your budget as well. So this is, would be your time to discuss those three departments or ask questions or you don't?
I have a no for all of them. You just put, we just authorized another fifty thousand for our communications department for, we specified what it's for, but still that's another fifty thousand. Plus, we've done a hundred thousand for federal lobbyists. We've been giving them a lot of money. And as far as the CAO intern, that's a lot of money for an intern or seasonal, um. And no offense, Corbin, but you're so busy, I'm not sure that you tapped mine for an intern, quite frankly. Um, because an intern takes time to train. It's not like, it's not like hiring and it's it's going to help you. But someone, yeah, they can help, but they're also needing training. And we don't even have an economic development person. And they come and go really quickly. So that's where I'm at for those three.
But I'm one of seven.
Sixteen K for an intern. How, how many, what are we talking about here when we say season? We talking about sixteen K for one semester?
Uh, April, April to September.
Yeah, that's not bad.
End of, end of April till September. Yeah, full term.
That's, that's still four thousand dollars a month. For an intern?
That's for a graduate level intern.
That's not bad.
Yes.
That's something you and Gregly oversee or follow.
Both. We would have them do studies. We have them do studies like, um, well, exploration of, uh, rodeo arena, expansion, alternatives, cost modeling, cost benefit analysis. Um, pro forma, uh, modeling and policy for the operations of the community art center. Uh, fee studies for like all of our development fees, what percent of the fee is covered, or what percent of the service, like a subdivision application? Is covered by the fee.
Lot line changes? Chris, if you're listening, I brought up lot line changes.
Right, like, like Chris's email about lot line adjustments, right? Like, okay, how much time does that really take? Does the fee cover seventy percent of the cost? Does the fee cover ninety percent or a hundred percent of the cost? Then you can bring that to the council and say, is that the right level of subsidization to that? Therein is the policies. Um, just all kinds of management analyst studies that we're not getting to, because we don't have uh, management analyst time. So it's that, it's that kind of work, those kinds of soles. You're right, uh, Councilman Whitlock, interns take a bit of time. They take a bit of mentoring. It's not, uh, it's not an off, it's not a, no, it's not a, they can't off, but I do feel like it's a value add.
They're a graduate level, right? So, Corbin, I don't disagree with what you just said. But I'm gonna sound terrible, but we approved two budgets since then. Somebody in public facilities to do some planning and studies for Veterans Memorial Park and some other things. And it's two years. We haven't seen a dang thing yet. And that's my concern. Is that, you know, we say, hey, yeah, we can do it. We can do two or three of these stuff, but track record on at least one other hasn't been fantastic. So I don't know where I sit on that one. I don't care about the set, the the seventeen five I can drop, um, even though it's just a small amount. Uh, it doesn't matter either way. Uh, I would want to know for the communications specialist, I think I'm kind of with Kayleen here. I want to know what, until I say yes to that, I want to know what the metrics are going to be and what the expectations are, what the output's going to be. I really, I really do. I want to know what the output's going to be, what we're going to get for a hundred thousand dollars. We, you know, we we added, we added, you know, it used to be two in the staff. We added a third. And that's in, that's in the last two or three years.
Yeah.
So now what we're talking about is doubling the staff from two to four. And what are we going to get out of, if, are are, are we going to get thirty percent more output? Are we only going to get five? Without that information, I can't support.
So Tony's joining us online. Ask her to speak to that communications specialist position.
Yeah, Tony, go ahead.
Hi, guys. It's, it's good to be with you virtually. I wish I could be there in person. Um, I always prefer, prefer to chat with you face to face, but right now I can be the, the voice apparently from above. I'm, I'm happy to answer your questions. Um, I, I want to start Kelvin, um, or Councilmember Green by, uh, wi- with the comments you just made. We, we did add a member of staff two years ago. I think we've seen a dramatic improvement to our communication to do, due to that, we have stopped outsourcing a significant amount of design, which has saved us money and actually decreased my overall budget. Um, so I think that position has been, been well worth it, and I see the same type of improvement out of this position. As my role has shifted to be more focused, um, a little bit more focused on legislative affairs, I've been spending less of my time on communications. Um, we have also experienced some pretty dramatic growth in our, um, capital improvement needs and communication over that with the number of projects that we're taking on, we've taken on. And so we've shifted focus to that, which has done two things. Um, one, it does not allow us the same amount of time we used to have to do more proactive communications, which means we've pulled back significantly. And we're also not able to grow our communications programming in line with other cities and other opportunities. For instance, um, video is the most popular form of communication, and it's one that our residents would like us to pick up on more. Uh, just yesterday, I answered a couple of residents who are asking when we're going to join Blue Sky. We've had questions about when we're going to join Threads. We're at our bandwidth right now. We cannot add to our workflow. We can't produce more work with the staff that we have. If we want to grow to respond to those types of needs and do a better job of proactively communicating to our residents, uh, we do need additional staffing. I would add to that, just that we're not keeping pace with other cities and with what other cities are doing. I think my staff does a really great job with the resources that we have. But, um, you know, I'll compare us to Harriman. They're a much smaller city, but they're our neighbor. They have twice the amount of staff we have and three times the amount of budget. If I compare us with Provo, they've got a staff of over ten in their communications department. West Valley has a staff of eight. Um, we operate on fifty percent of the budget that those cities operate on, and I'm, I'm not asking for a significant increase. I rarely ask for increases. Um, and I do, I I know Councilmember, um, Whitlock had a question, uh, related to the fifty thousand dollar increase. You know, I asked for that increase in relation to the request that you guys had to bring a liquor store to the city. I'm more than happy to do that work for you. However, if you're asking for my professional opinion of what is the greatest benefit to our residents, I, I would say the greatest benefit would be in ROI, and ROI would be in the communications position. So if this is an either or and not a both, uh, that's where I would recommend investing our city dollars and take a more conservative approach to the lobbying effort.
So what I'm saying is our goals, objectives and purpose, we are not currently meeting what we've set as standard for the city. And so having a communications specialist is going to help achieve the goal that we ourselves have set for the city that we can improve upon. And according to the survey results and the goals, and the ROI way that we had on the lobbyist, obviously, has come back more than ten polls, which is great news. And I look forward to, if we say yes in communication specialist, which I personally feel is a wise choice. I want to make sure that we have the metrics, not just for, you know, the goals we have right here, but I want to see the survey results from this past of results and continue seeing that survey results over the next couple of years, so we can see the metrics of the ROI for that communities, communications specialist.
Okay, so now I'm gonna ask a question. Let's just hypothetically say, we have the survey results from twenty twenty-three. We're going through the survey right now, twenty twenty-four. What happened to, and and we now know why I was pissy, uh, six or eight months ago and said we should have done the survey then because we can't look at it now. But the, so what happens when we do the survey and we hire now? We are not going to see the results of this until the summer of twenty twenty twenty, we're not, we're not. The summer of twenty twenty twenty, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not going to see the results till next summer. And what happens if the residents come back and say? That these these three numbers go down? Are we gonna then say, oh? We gotta, we gotta add another, another communication specialist? I I I'm just, I'm just trying, and and what, are are we going to cut the specialist because? It was okay, it didn't make any difference. So I I get the metrics. And I get what Tony's saying is that we're not as, we're not as robust as some of the other cities.
But we do have to take the steps forward to do that, and that, this is part of those steps.
Anyway, and this isn't just residents communication. The survey you're talking about isn't the only metric to measure. Economic development.
It's the only metric that we have.
There are so many things, though, that the communications department does for cities. It's our PR department. And this is, this is every time we see new media call upon the. Call the city, who responds or who does the research to find the data that they're asking for to respond? This is, um, when we want to do an economic development project, we want to, we want to do something big and flashy and say, come to West Jordan. We want to put something together. These are the people that do that. And a hundred thousand dollars total ongoing for you engaged, but if you're paying them about fifty, this is a college grad. With two years experience, if you're lucky. This is not a senior person. We're not hiring another Tony for this much money. We're not hiring another Marie for this much money. You, this is a junior position that you're gonna get some grunt work out of, which is exactly what they need.
Although I applied for a communication specialist at another city, and they didn't hire me. They hired the high school graduate, even though I've got way more. Right, and I would have done it from sixteen. But to your point, uh, Councilmember Green about we're not going to see whether this works for you. That is every single thing in this budget we won't see. So that's a, if you're gonna make that point on every item.
Is we're gonna see. Pretty fast with someone dedicated.
This is one of the very few we're adding employees.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is one that I I think, like Tony said, I had this conversation with Kim Wells. Eight years ago. I said, why don't we do more? Forward-facing stuff with our cities. She says, I got this size of a department. Now we got this size of a department, but we need, for a city our size. We need six more communication, probably four more.
So do we want to be the top tax person like Harriman?
No, but we're not going that direction, even with this.
If we keep adding staff, we're gonna be there because we're gonna need that amount.
What if we like Harriman will be like here?
I don't want.
There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of times that we bring up what other cities are doing, what other cities are getting and we're not giving, and we wonder why, and then we have to step in like this. That's, we wonder why the reality, the 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 hockey arena's practice facility is going to Sandy and the baseball stadium going to South Jordan. And the real.
Because we don't have enough communications staff.
Actually, yeah, that's a big part of it.
That's what PR does for you.
Yeah, PR is important, but there are other departments.
We want to engage more with our citizens and our residents, and we don't have the capabilities to do that.
One thing I've learned in the past six, seven years is whenever somebody from staff asks us for something like this, it's not just for fun. It's not just because, oh, yeah, let's just add a person. So I'm I'm confident that this person we're adding will be useful and bring us a return on investment.
I'm a yes for all three.
I'm a yes for all three as well.
Me as well.
All right. Any other discussions about the three department budgets?
I mean, chances are we'll use the seventeen five.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, we're just, we've put it there as a placeholder for what, you know, what comes our way? What are we, what are we wanting to explore as opportunities to vision? Hey, next slide. And we're gonna go to the next. Um, now we're gonna start with the biggest budgets. We've gone through the elected officials budgets. Now we're gonna go to the biggest budgets. So we're gonna start with the police department. Um, the total change from the prior year is six point two percent. Um. We're going to be bringing to you the, um, the pickup rate for the retirement contribution for our our sworn officers. Has increased and we'll be bringing a resolution to kind of public hearing to you to quick that up. That is included in this as well as, um, a cost of living increase and the merit increases. Uh-huh.
Did you find that was?
Oh, it's, um, it's a reply, so to participate in the sworn officers retirement program. Oh. The piece that the re- the employees will be required to pay towards the pension.
I had something to report.
Uh, like pickup gates or something or. Pickup trucks, yeah. Um, so the police department, I would take, well, the police departments, like police, crossing guards, animal control. I'm sorry, I have got to change that vernacular. It's animal services. It's not animal control. Thank you. Um, animal services and swap, um, forty-one cents of every dollar that we collect in revenue is dedicated toward. Toward our public safety. So that's that piece of the pie there. Um, if you'll go to the next slide for me for just a moment. Um, oops, oh, look, you're done, chief. Um, these are the expansion requests in their budget. Um, they have identified, uh, two officers. They received four. Cops grants. So they received authorization for four officers that would be reimbursed at about forty thousand dollars per year per officer. Um, we have a certain time period to use those grants. We have decided to recommend to you two officers this year. And, um, we'll consider the other two officers in next year's budget. Um, and then this year also the police officer for the school resource officer, which we would recover partially in, um. A contract with the school that the officer would be assigned to. The taser replacement program because our tasers are out of, um. What is the word?
They're both out of warranty and they're both out of technology, meaning they can't be repaired and we can't.
They're not supported.
Replacement cartridges when we use them. It's a dead, it's a dead tool.
Yeah.
What's the lifetime of those? Like ten years?
There's eight years.
The the one we have, uh, were expected to be, uh, I think six. They went seven. Uh, we're at year eight. Uh, this next generation, they're.
Yeah.
They are predicting a ten-year period.
What's, what's the length of this contract? And.
Ten years at seventy-three thousand per year. So I was really impressed, honestly, with the negotiating skills of the police department. Uh, this contract started out when they came to us at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Um, they negotiated it down to seventy-three thousand dollars a year for the first five years and eighty-six thousand for the second five years. Um, and then negotiated it down to seventy-three thousand dollars flat for ten years. So there's no inflationary factor in that.
Should you probably call that taser?
Sure, the, I'd rather pay that money if it means saving lives.
It's a non-lethal of use of course.
How many ways would you say a taser saves in a year? Or or the taser program? That's a, you're you're asking me to tell you the number of incidents that don't act.
Three, but when a taser is.
I understand what you're asking. And if you were, if you were to talk to the marketing people, they would give you, the taser marketing people. Um, they would give you a hard number and predict. I would say here in our organization, this police department, given number of deployments we use to the taser, we have. How many told we have last year? Thirty? Let let's just say thirty-two. Now, we example is one by one. I would tell you that at least fifty percent of those, the officer would have been lawfully justified in using a firearm and killing a person. You want to talk about what it costs to shoot somebody? I'm happy to do that with my legal experience, but it, I would say about. About fifty percent of those deployments. So it would be fair to say. It would be a safe number to say last year you could have shot ten people. We didn't. We used a taser.
By the way, while you're, while while you're up, I just want to say thank you for the goals and objections. He made it very, very clear. To understand where you're coming out with the budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then we've also added, um, the purchase of a drone, which will be shared between the police and fire department. Say, I, um. Yeah, I want to share with you that I presented at, at, um, a statewide conference, and one of the things that, um, we presented on. Was the collaboration and cooperation of our police and fire department with each other. It's unheard of.
Yes.
Because they didn't have a.
Softball, on the softball field.
And the fire department always wins.
But no city at that, I had, there were over a hundred and sixty people in that conference and no city there. In fact, we got a standing ovation for our city. Um, and we use the example of when the fire department gave up their overtime so the police could do some training during COVID, right? So that was our start of the conversation, but at no time have we ever seen the collaboration and coordination between two departments. Quite in the same way that the city does. So those, your two chiefs. They've asked for a drone and they're willing to share the technology and they're willing to share the training and they're willing to put a drone team together to help with it. It will, I mean, I I heard, we heard the arguments from both sides and there was great support for this. So this has been included in the budget. Um, under the police department as a request, but we'll assist with fire as well. And, um, we put it into the CIP fund where we're putting our one-time purchases, right? Because it's really a one-time purchase. Um, so those are the expansion requests.
On the survey, um, with the seventy percent of residents who feel safe living in West Jordan, do you have a goal that you want to get that number to?
Hundred. Uh, yeah, I do.
A realistic goal.
I do have a realistic goal, and my realistic goal is a hundred. Because I think that's achievable. Obviously, you're always going to have to get, you know, citizen comments. I will tell you that of our surveys that we get back, and just this morning, I looked at last month's survey. We're the few police departments in the state, by the way, that surveys. In the last month, our approval rate was ninety-three percent. So, you know, it it's gonna change. Uh, one person wrote me a really derogatory, and he really conjugated foul words in an interesting way. There will always be that, there will always be that person, but but part of it is the work we do, but a part of it also is helping people understand why we do what we do and how we do it. And I would, I would, can I, can I answer this question in a different way? So right now, you've seen the deputy chiefs get up and move out a minute ago. Uh, right now, we've got a barricaded suspect who is barricaded with weapons, domestic violence situation. He's a convicted felon. Uh, shouldn't have a gun. The federal law said he shouldn't have a gun, so I have no idea why we're calling SWAT out and getting a warrant to go into his house. We will do everything we can, but one of the tools that those operators carry in the stick and the formation going in is a taser. We take every effort we can, every effort we can to not shoot, to not kill. And that helps. When people understand our philosophy in our police department, they feel safer in this community. And that's part of how we make people feel safer, Councilmember. So a hundred percent, you may think that's pie in the sky. I don't.
Well, that's why I want to make sure that we're, make, uh, the budget is helping to support that. And I want to know if there's anything else that we can do that you haven't listed. To help with that.
Yeah. Well, interesting question. You don't want the answer from me.
No, I do. I want to know.
So on my way here tonight, I stopped off at the Veridian Library and I went in there to pick up a. Uh, something I had in reserve. And as I walked out, I got stopped by one of our residents who was trailing on three little kids. And he just did this, held up his hand, and he turned to his kid and he said, what are you gonna say? What? He said, thank you for your service. You can talk to the people in your neighborhood. You could be Facebook warriors. You can express your confidence. Listen, if you want to complain about the police department, come and see. I have said time and time again, I will take a complaint on a piece of toilet paper from Salt Lake County Jail, and I have. But you can, you can help support us by letting our officers know, letting your community know. We work really hard to make sure that everybody feels safe in this. There you have it.
So, by the way, Ken.
Sir.
Happy West Jordan Police Day, because today is May fifteenth, but it's also National Police Memorial Day, if anybody forgot. So do not forget that, and that's why the flag trip has to.
So I, I know that, I get it. We're, we are asking you in part, if you grow the police department, you're growing here. I get that. I truly do. I understand that. I'm not going to give a comparison to other cities because I don't want to kill them. Uh, we, we are going to show you one comparison to another city because I think it's just really impactful and. Like meaningful. I've got, I've got four goals in asking you or additional police officers, I have four goals. Maintain our ability to keep people safe on the streets. And I I told you a couple of years ago when we added officer, I said, listen, we've got to have enough, oh, thank you. We've got to have enough officers that someone, something like what's happening right now happens, we've got to have enough officers that are trained and equipped. To respond to that. And I talked to you about that. I'm talking about increasing the number just to get us to that or keep us at that, that level of service that we're offering now. Second, I'm asking you to recognize that our calls volume is changing, but also our call profile is changing. And that's critical for you to understand.
How is that changing? Sorry, it's a stupid question, but how?
It is not, it's not a stupid question. If you give me just two seconds, I'm gonna. In in a graph. We also want to be able to better address the economic impact on our businesses. Look, business development people are going out and bringing businesses in. That's correct. We love the city. We love to see the Walmarts. We we love to see Home Depot. We pray for, um, Outback Steakhouse. Other, uh, certain other businesses. But businesses aren't going to want to come here. They don't have the sense that their property is going to be safe. If they don't have the sense that when they're crime victims. The police department is going to address those economic crimes. And I say that because in many, many cities throughout the country, including here in Utah, including a, a city of Bayland, Kana, the north of this. Businesses are talking all the time about how they don't get response on shoplifters, how they don't get response on credit card fraud, how they don't get response. On burglars. We want to make sure that we keep that service level, so businesses feel safe, not just people, but businesses feel safe. And then finally, to add that school resource officer to a charter school that will pay the majority of of the cost. Who's got this? Would you move to the? Here's where we're gonna answer. So i- it's it's important to know that the daily average calls for service in the police department are escalating fairly significantly. Uh, just year to date, you can see the the change over last year. Go ahead and move one, ahead one more.
Is that dependent on population or things are getting worse?
A little bit of both. The population growth, um, the line for the population growth kind of goes like this, culture is like this. I'm not entirely certain why the gap by the calls for service are are outpacing. Part of it is the demographics of folks who move into the city. There's certain apartment complexes where we spend. There are a couple of apartment complexes where I sort of feel like we should have a police substation. And that's, that's, uh, part, twice more if you would, there's a. You, you probably do. Year to date, about half of our calls are priority one, two, and three. We're priority one calls, priority one calls are traffic crash. Incidents, priority call, uh, one calls or where a gun has been displayed, where somebody has been physically assaulted. Where an injury has occurred, a domestic violence, uh, we are not immune to the increase in domestic violence. And and here's a real important thing for you to capture. It's not just that our call volume is going up and you can see that in the graph. It's that these priority calls are going in. When we have a priority call, just leave alone the situation we have right now, but when we have a domestic violence call. We absolutely cannot allow an officer to enter into that residence alone. We always have two officers. Some of our DV calls, so we can, we find out, you know, as we're going to that call, if there's a history there. I asked Chief Roberts, what's the history of this home? He was able to tell me, there's DV and there's a weapons charge there, and we've got a guy that's probably going to be a, a challenge in a broad force. I am assuming that his rapid departure means SWAT knowledge. Too bad, because he was mine, he was one of my, my, uh, visual aids for something in just a minute.
I'm sure one of those fine channeling for Philly.
Well, none of them really quite fit. Yeah, that actually. Tyrell, Tyrell will jump in for me. So when we have the escalation priority calls, it means an escalation in time that the officers are tied up on calls, which means they're not available. And I know Councilmember Green, you weren't asking me to increase traffic citations. What this means is that all, all of our discretionary time activities, they just plummet. They just plummet. I I mean, I'm glad that Jordan was here, Sergeant Smith. Uh, but he's got responsibilities in community. He's got responsibilities in outreach. He's not going to do those things. He's gonna spend his time in in SWAT. Please, sure.
How was, um, like, for instance, traffic citations? Are are we, are we giving out fewer and fewer traffic citations because? Of the higher priority calls?
We are, our, our traffic citation numbers stay relatively flat. We're just not seeing the, we're not seeing the same growth that we would uh, with population. However, they also, they also are impacted by episodic events and locations. For example, if you go speeding on Ninetieth South right now, you're going to get a traffic citation. There is one area in town where you're going to get a ticket if you speed. Sergeant Hercules, what is the one area down where you get a ticket for five miles an hour over?
I can tell you, because I got one.
Where?
School zones.
Oh, no, an idea, sorry.
You'll see a few certain fences uh, where there are more citations, um. And frankly, the fines have remained relatively flat, except schools, you didn't get a ticket at school zone, did you?
No, it was an idea.
Oh, thank goodness.
No, I would never do.
Schools own fines just went up dramatically and that was the state legislature that did that.
Hardly to our motors.
So Ken, Ken, I'm going to ask the question. Because you're talking about police calls for service and those kind of things. We are going to, assuming that we get it back here, Senator. We are going to be changing the parking ordinance that allows for non-sworn officers to issue tickets.
We are.
Yeah, we talked about it, it's coming back. Right?
Making it a little criminal.
I'm just saying it hasn't been passed.
No, but it's coming back and we, we had at least four that said bring it back, so I'm going to make that assumption. I should never assume, but it, but I don't see anything in the budget for parking enforcement. Are we talking about, are we going to talk about parking enforcement?
I'm happy to address that. Uh, our community, we are fully staffed with community service officers. Now we've got three. They handle our parking complaints. We do send officers out on parking complaints. Um, and more than just the priority parking, more than just blocking fire zones and things like that. I mean, the mayor just yesterday let me know about a complaint on, is it, I don't know if it's pronounced Edinburgh or Edinburgh. Up, up by the high school, and we've been up there several times. The CSOs go up there, but occasionally, occasionally the motor units will help with, with uh, parking as well. I, I can't give you a number on parking citations, but I'll tell you, they've remained relatively flat uh, as well.
But if we're going to change that to, if, so if we change this to a, a, or, or when, when we change this to a non-criminal, that you don't have to be a sworn officer, issue citations, are the three CSOs enough to handle what we typically get with all the resident complaints, particularly during the winter months? Or do we need to look at adding something to this?
I would say that that would be a great topic to address if the council moves in the direction of administrative citations. I you certainly wouldn't see much increase in citation issuance uh, with three CSO. They are pretty, they're fairly heavily taxed with their time, and they don't just do parking, they do other. So we try and, we try and deliver services at a certain level of, of certification or, or training or licensure. So we've got a major crash on Banger, uh, for example, or Mountain View. We'll try and get one or two CSOs out there. They've got the trucks that, that uh, have the cones and so forth, they'll direct traffic, set up barricades and so forth. Now, we are going to get some help this next year, beginning in July from UDOT and from the Highway Patrol, because they will start to share responsibility. And we're very grateful for that. That's going to have an impact. And frankly, I remember about citation revenue. But the citations that are written there by highway patrol troopers, they'll go to Judge Coons' court, they don't go to some other court. So, the answer to your question is no. But let's, I, I think it'd be good to have that discussion if the council moves in the direction of
So one, what, what is that? I'm going to chime in on this. Once the ordinance changes, that that change gives us an extra tool, right? As we discussed at the work session, going from criminal to civil didn't eliminate the criminal process, just adds the ability to pursue the civil process.
But if we're not going to do anything, so hell, we did it, and, and we don't serve and serve the residents, then our efforts have been futile because the residents will just continue to complain about where to park.
It will, it will allow us that tool, that option, whether it's with CSO or an additional parking staff. There was, um, there was cost and there were some assumptions that, hey, we can do this and it will pay for itself. Um.
Well, it's never going to pay for itself.
Right. Unless we're writing an awful, awful lot of parking tickets, it won't pay for itself.
It does contribute to, it, it pays for itself if you measure public satisfaction with government. It's not, I'm just, for a nanosecond, I'm going to put a different hat on. I formally served as the administrative law judge for the city of South Salt Lake, because I'm, in a far time, you happen to be an attorney. And uh, in, in that case, they have administrative citations, they have administrative citations. It is feasible that other people outside the police department, code enforcement, others, so you can, you can sort of have a force multiplier if you go that direction. But when you get to that point, I'd be happy to have an in-depth discussion.
Okay.
So if you go to the next slide for me, please, Alan. I, I said I wasn't going to compare to other cities, I'm going to compare to one, because this, this is a powerful metric. We are currently going through our quarterly in-service training. All of the police officers in the police department are going through an eight-hour, every quarter they go through one day. The first half of this training, this cycle around, is four hours with Chief Bell, Chief Robertson, and myself. Uh, I'm, I'm talking about some Fourth Amendment intrusions, trying to make sure that we do risk management in terms of when we can properly enter a home. Talking about how we create good records using the, the body worn camera tools that, that you've allowed us to have. Chief Bell is, is talking about not arresting people. We have a philosophy, we have an approach, and we have a training protocol in our department that focuses on not arresting people whenever possible. We try and use citations, we try and use complaint and summons that is going to an attorney. Uh, and, and issuing a summons to bring people into court, we try and use referrals to alternative adjudication or alternative service providers, such as the mobile crisis outreach team or mental health services. We do that for two principal reasons. Co-equal, I think, in importance. One, the fewer people we arrest, the fewer times my officers, it takes about thirty minutes on a good day to get someone from the front door of the jail into a jail cell. My officer has to be there the whole time. Depending on traffic, it can take twenty minutes. Depending on where they arrest someone, it can take forty minutes. We can tie up an officer on a physical custodial arrest, three, three and a half hours. Every minute that that officer's out of our city, that officer's not responding to a call for service in our city. Hence, we try and push down the number of physical custodial arrests. Now, sometimes we have. And sometimes it's the right thing to do. And sometimes it's the safest thing to do for the community. The second reason is, uh, I haven't figured out what I'm about by now. Uh, I don't particularly want to see people grow up with criminal records. And there's some really good research that tells us that when we put people into an adjudicative system without a physical arrest, they are less likely to be rearrested. In other words, we defeat recidivism by not creating arrest records to begin. Especially with our youth. And so we really focus whenever we can on keeping kids eighteen, nineteen, twenty, out of jail. So that's why it's so impactful to take a look at West Valley with a hundred and seventy percent more officers than we have in our city. Uh, with really only about twenty thousand more residents. And West Jordan, these are jail bookings per officer. You can see that every year, our officers, even with our focus, even with our emphasis on not arresting people, we're booking more people in jail. That takes time. That takes time. What that tells you, the story that that tells you is that our officers are busy on priority calls, they are busy with domestic violence situations where the law mandates a physical custodial arrest. Domestic violence calls, uh, as of last year, because of our state legislature, also mandate a lethality assessment tool in each and every year. That takes time. It takes time for our records officers to then collate that information, send it to the state in the form they require. So all of these requirements are adding on to the burden of the officer on the street. Frankly, they're just tired. They're, they're just tired. We'll go to the last slide, did you have a question?
Is the, the reason there is fewer arrests per officer in West Valley because they have so many more officers? That they're, they're more fully staffed?
They have two hundred and eighteen officers compared to our average count, Jerry, our average I think our average sworn count last year, we're authorized a hundred and thirty with the contract staff, but I think our average is a hundred and twenty-one or a hundred and twenty-two we have compared to their two hundred and eighteen.
Is there another support that we're not maybe thinking about to help decrease that time away, the, the, the officers away from other priority calls that we can work with or find solutions for?
We've talked to Sheriff Dr. Rivera about uh doing something that, similar to what they do, for example, in Phoenix. One of the county sheriff has a mobile booking uh, ban and a transport. Uh, local agencies have the sheriff visits the Phoenix Police Department precincts, for example. Excuse me, once or twice a shift, or we've talked about that. In fairness to her, the population of the south end of the valley doesn't support it. So she, and, and she's stretched with resources, but we're constantly looking for, for thoughts like that.
Are we looking for any other types of programs that can increase leverage, like uh, a reserve program or anything like that? Is that worth the money, anything like that?
Yeah. It's worth the money and uh, when I started forty-two years ago, a lot, a lot of officers got in to full-time law enforcement through a reserve program. Here's the catch today. We're picky, okay? Everybody knows that about West Jordan, we're really picky about who comes in the door. And, and we fill our spots, not as quickly as we'd like. But it's hard, it's hard to find, find a certified officer, and so I'm always willing to entertain a reserve catches, nobody really is interested in doing that work when they can easily go get a full-time job. The, the demand isn't there. And I've got to tell you, the, the explosion we're going to see and whatever happens in the Jordan School District, whether it's guardians, whether it's private security, whether it's school resource officers, the new legislation, we're going to have a hard time finding, uh, finding a freedom. Okay. Finally, there's a, there's a real morale doin' reason for adding two officers. It just is a relief, though. We've got to run on day shift, for example, five officers minimum. I don't want to take up your time telling you how we calculate that minimum number, but it's a pretty low number. Uh, and it's fairly low even for a, a city of our size, it's, it's lower than some of our neighboring cities. So if one of those officers has a court subpoena, obviously I have to let him go. If I don't, I hear from Judge, truly, Judge Coons will walk down and call, like, he will walk into my office and let me know the guys. And, and he should, right? He should. He needs people in court when they're there for witnesses. We have mandatory training. Forty hours the officers have got to get over here. So I told you about our internist training. Those officers can't be out on the street when they're doing their eight hours of training, when they're doing their four hours of the chiefs, their four hours fire qualification. Over the last few years, and here's an area, frankly, if you want to criticize me publicly or behind my back, this is an area where I am truly open to criticism. In the last few years, we have significantly increased the number of people that we have hired with military association. Uh, you know, we celebrate the Marine Corps birthday every year. On November tenth, we also invite all the veterans of other service branches uh, to that celebration. We celebrate Veterans Day. Ten percent, just about ten percent of the police department are marine veterans. And you start adding in Army, Air Force, we've got, we've got a couple of, of uh, Navy veterans. And currently have fourteen officers with military obligations. So they're either weekend warriors in the National Guard. I, I have to give them the time off. They have two weeks at least, required by law. But it's also the right thing to do in our community, right? Uh, and we've had, last couple of years, they've both taken off.
They're going to take ties.
We just had two people take off to, to deal with this situation. They were my visual aides who've gone off to, to foreign lands for up to nine months to, to serve our country. And we, we have to hold that spot and we have to backfill that spot. Now, I get it, you can say, well, why do you do that? Well, I do that because they bring skills to us. We work, we've got a guy, we're waiting to, to finish a twenty-year hitch in the special forces, uh, who's a, a combat medic. Fire department is just incredible in supporting us in our SWAT team with medics. But we're going to get one of the top medics in the United States Army here in this department. We, we recruited him and we're waiting to get him in August. He'll finish his twenty years in August. He's going to come to us with a panoply of, of ability and skills and be able to transfer those skills to other people. I'm not paying a freaking penny for it. And we've got, we've got technicians that deal with radio issues, I could go on and on. We exploit the training and the experience of those young men and women in the guard. And one final thing. Sometimes I ask people to do things that, if it weren't on my grandkids, teenage grandkid, I'd get, why? I don't get that. So that's, that's my request to you, that's my plea. I'm not asking for anything in order, but I am very conscious that I'm asking for a lot.
I have to go back to, sorry, my head is still, your opinions. With the types of calls that are coming in and the, and the struggle to get, you know, the officers off the priority calls. Right now, we're looking at Band-Aids. In your opinion, is there something that we as a city, I, and I know it's a big question and we can't answer it now, but is there something as a city we can start doing to, to attack the core issue with some of these calls, with the domestic calls and stuff like that? So and I, I always say it's a long-term thing, but I, I, in your opinion, is there things we can do as a city that could hopefully help with these long-term issues of these priority calls that are?
Yeah, it's, you're asking a really tough question.
I know, I know, but it's, but
There are some things. I mean, we can, we can continue to, and, and one of the things, for example, that um, Ms. Barker helps us with is our, our membership on the, the CJAC, the Criminal Justice Advisory Council for Salt Lake County. And pushing for more and more resources, we love the acronyms in policing, AMCO, Mobile Crisis Outreach Team. Um, Salt Lake has great service from them, anybody who's near Huntsman has great service. Uh, pushing for more of those resources here in the South Valley, which frankly makes sense. And so as you deal with your, your fellow council members and the mayor deals with the other mayors in this area, you, you can advocate and vocalize for mental health support for our community because a, a very significant number of our priority calls involve issues of mental health. And
And it's not just you guys, it's the fire department too.
Right, and, yeah, and you folks, honestly, I mean, I know you represent people in the city, it's not representative cross-section really. I, I don't think we're going to come to your house for a domestic violence situation. You know, we, we have people who, who really need the social services to help address, address the root cause of the confrontation in the family. And we get called to to deal with situations that are born out of frustration because of finances, because of interpersonal relationships, because of romances gone wrong, because of fidelity. And all of a sudden, they're a police problem? So, yeah, you can, you can help pressure those social service agencies that can bring the resources that, that address the, the root problem of domestic violence and a mental health crisis. And finally, illnesses.
It's getting worse here. I mean, it's, it's worse, but we're seeing it more prevalent here in West Jordan.
Sure, we have a river and we have a track station.
I just, my, my question really is, like, what steps can we start to talk about and take for the long-term health of our city? Not just for the police department, but obviously the entire city, that we should not just look at Band-Aids, but look at some serious core issues.
And I think some of it's events, having events where people get out and mingle with those people and
Create connections and, and you know, we
County Health Department brings in a volunteer.
We tried with, with Chief Maxwell, we tried for a, a federal grant this year, that something we thought was pretty novel, and that was to, to give a mental health first responder to our fire department. Because often, often these mental health calls, it's us and the fire department together. And we do have a great partnership, there's no that's not braggadocio, that's just like, again, that's something people know about West Jordan fireworks and police. Uh, that's something that we love. I, I intend to pursue that again uh, as soon as we see another opportunity of federal funding, because I think that's part of, part of the risk.
In, in the meantime of waiting on federal funding, I would love to see the big numbers. I know it's sure somewhere and it's just not part of my base, but I'd love to start seeing the numbers of how much that would be an ongoing cost, so that way we can have that conversation if we have that in the budget.
I've given you everything that's in my head right now, but I could put other stuff. And I have two really, really deputy chiefs, I truly do, I'm very grateful to these people. Are there any other questions that I can answer? Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes, I've got a, a question about overtime in your department. Uh, it's five hundred, it's the, or the twenty twenty-five budget is five hundred and forty-five thousand. And my, my thought was, um, that's, that's paid at time and a half, is that, is that correct? Would it be domestic expensive just to add a few additional officers or is that a necessary part of, of, of the pay structure within the department?
Sure, it, it would not be, it would not be. Adding officers doesn't really hit that overtime issue, and I'll, I'll tell you why, the overtime kicks in in a couple of major categories, it kicks in. When we, we've got people on military leave. And, and I wouldn't want to just have an officer on the shelf, right, to pull out and plug into a spot, it, it kicks in when we have extraordinary events. Uh, I, I know that I made a comment that, that was a little macabre last year or the year before. Uh, so I told my officers, no more murders. If we have a homicide, typically a homicide is about thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime. So it's really there for, for those things, some years we use it, some years we don't. I mean, I'm sort of proud to say we've, since I've been chief, we've always returned a fairly significant amount of money at the end.
A lot of the mandatory DUI patrols are overtime too, aren't they?
Yeah, some of that, but the council member agreeing that. Uh, money is reimbursed, so it's, we do.
It shows up in the budget.
Yeah, but it does come back to us from.
Yeah, so that was my point is that we, we, we have mandatory, we have overtime like for DUIs, but we get some of that money back.
And on ninety the South right now, um, we're, we're obligated as, as part, I don't know if it's in the contract, we're obligated with, with UDOT to provide an officer out there, but we get paid back for that officers. And, and for the UDOT, the construction workers to be safe. It comes back.
That, that question, that root question of. This overtime, is there a better, more efficient way to take those dollars and? Reduce overtime, we ask, ask that of every department, we talk about it, we analyze it and the, whether it's fire, police. Uh, water is a good example, it's. It ends up being spikes in service demand. For uh, like a water line break, a homicide investigation.
Hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and hire three more police officers.
But you're not gonna address the problem of.
Right.
When I have, so two years ago, we had multiple murders. And, and one was a triple homicide in one night involving Florencia thirteen gang members and, and ultimately that one case, we're still dealing with that, but that one case, we've got about forty-five to forty-eight. Suspects associated with that.
Give them overtime.
Yeah, and it's, so adding people doesn't really help, right?
But we watch it, we watch it close and think about it often, you know?
I do.
All right.
That's what I'm quite locked.
Are those that serve in the reserves, are they? Do they leave staggeredly or do they leave all of the.
Yes. Yes, so how, how much control do I have over that?
Zero.
Yeah, I, uh, so I was a luncheon at the university.
I, I'm not saying you have control, but you have an idea of what usually occurs, right?
Because some are in, some are in the Air Force Reserve, some are in the Army National Guard, some are in the Air Guard. Uh, I've, I've had to go on long-term deployments at the same time. Didn't work out so well, I, I sat with the, uh. The one star, I was lunching the other day and I, so we're so happy for, you know, these people and it's just, yeah, you're happy until I sit in somewhere.
So who was the one star?
And I used to be chief of staff. He was the fellow who's chief of staff, we were.
He was sir.
Yeah, he was, to me, he was sir, I saw that one star and it's like, oh, don't sit by me.
You got four stars, man, you got a, you got.
They're tiny stars.
I guess, I guess in my head, if that, I don't respect. I would think that if we added an extra officer. That there's plenty of work that they could be doing, but then they would also be there to fill in for those that are gone, I don't know.
Sure.
I would think that that could.
I wish, I wish.
Impacted a little bit.
Wish we were always that safe.
So the, the problem we have with, with particularly like National Guard reserves. Is that you have this body that has five hundred and thirty-five people that are crazy sometimes, that won't make, you know. And they won't. Uh, and they won't pay, they don't do a budget for months and, or, or something comes up. And all of a sudden you have to cancel the drill because there's no money, because the budget doesn't get passed and then they.
Get it off that tree.
It, it, it is very, it is very difficult in this day and age for, I mean. I had a drill skip and, and things are getting, just so you know, things are getting diff, more different. What, you know, fifteen years drills, the traditional garden, like grill, one weekend a month, two weeks a year. Now, if you're in. Half the units in the, the state in the Utah National Guard, you can expect a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday drills. They're, they're drilling, they're now drilling four and five days. Because what the, the, the soldier, and this is actually the soldiers. Are saying, it takes us so much time to get here and set up. And get ready for training and then we have to take it down in a day, that they're saying, bring us in for four or five days. And so it, it, it's changed the dynamic of the guard. To, to say, well, you know, it's just not a Friday and a Saturday anymore, or a Saturday, Sunday, or a Friday night, Saturday, Sunday that we used to do. It's four and five days in a row and their annual training periods aren't just two weeks anymore. You know, it could be three weeks, it could be seventeen days, it could be twenty-one days, I did all kinds, so it, it is so sporadic, it's cut off.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt police for a second? This discussion is very germane to fire too, Chief Maxfield, you've got ten percent of your staff are active duty or reserve, active reserve.
You've just left, you lost Dave Bauer, come on.
Yeah, that helped. I totally agree with what Chief Valentine's saying and we experienced the same thing, we currently have. Three of our medics who are deployed for long-term deployments, we don't expect to get them back till probably the end of the year. Um, and, and like Chief Valentine said, they're great employees, there are a couple of them are special forces medics. They actually help with SWAT when they're here because they have that training and have been a part of it. But we're running into the same thing, they're, they're fantastic employees, um, they're great candidates when they apply. But when they leave, we've gotta support them and we've gotta backfill them somehow and it, it has created some challenges for us as well, in fact. The very next person that we're going to hire that we've offered a job to is also in the military.
This is a challenge, I'm more than happy to work around.
And we feel the same way, we feel the same way, we love to support it. And we're, we're proud of our guys that are part of that and that serve. Um, but it does, it does prevent challenges for us on the backend trying to keep Indian staff and ambulances with the people that we need, so.
And it's true in our other departments too, more prevalent in police and fire, but also in.
I, he just, I, his P had.
Yeah.
What's his name go off to? Derek, I was thinking, he's back now, he's back, but. Jacob, a slide, Alan, to the, to the budget, let's, let's kind of steer this background.
This is good background info, I think you'll get a conversation on that.
I appreciate it. So philosophically, and I'm just gonna tell you, philosophically generally, I don't like the idea of getting a grant to, and then it commits us long-term, right? But what I do like about getting the grants here is that I think what it allows us to do is grow the police department. And get a couple of officers on and then we can anticipate. We can anticipate and I think we have to, we have to focus on the, the, the anticipation of the new growth. But we can focus on the anticipation of the new growth to, to pick up on those grants and. And so I think that's a, I think that's a good way for us to anticipate officers for new growth. And hire them now and then as growth happens, the, the city budget grows because of that.
Yeah, it's a way to add officers and just have some of the upfront costs.
Yeah, right, I mean, but it helps us shift because the new growth will eventually help catch cover the problem.
But we're all aware, right, hiring a police officer is an ongoing effect, they can't wait to have you one time.
The need's there today, but we're also bringing some money to the table today.
Yeah.
That, that helps. And the same thing with the, you know, we, we have a, a church school that is coming in to pay. A little over three quarters of one officer, well, they'll get the services that officer bell to bell, but it's a net positive for the city because. Right now, we're responding to the calls for service to that school, now it's gonna be a school resource officer that they pay for. Bell to bell and then I get two hours on, on juvenile alcohol and drug enforcement for that officer in the summertime, so for me. I, I do realize, I'm not ignorant. I, I can do numbers and I know we're asking. Um, but we're doing our best to accommodate with reasonable requests and I do appreciate the, the angst and the work that you put into. Trying to prioritize things, obviously, I think my, my priorities are significant and, and well justified, but I certainly understand you have others. So, good luck to you.
Thank you for answering all our questions.
I'd like to just say real quick, I feel like. If, if Chief Valentine had come to us asking for five or ten officers, that still would have been reasonable based on what you've brought. The information you've brought to us today.
Uh, yeah, I feel like two is, I feel like two is, uh.
You want the official socks, bro.
Okay, I got a bunch of money back. I'll order your back.
They must, you must quietly resolve the situation with your back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll buy it. Can I show up?
Sorry, I didn't interrupt.
But, but.
I got one.
That makes a great point, every year I've been on the city council, it's always been, we need ten more askers for two. It's, it's been, every, every time that we've had a request, we, we need more, we're asking for it.
I, I really see ten where, where what would be reasonable, a reasonable request.
I would be open to adding mental health help even on this budget.
That's in here.
I'm, I'm not ready for that and when we do that, that is one area where I truly wanna walk hand in hand or marching.
I was gonna say, in some respects, having the mental health professional tied to the fire department.
Oh, yeah, the fire department, yeah, yeah.
Would be, might be better because you can train them as an E M P a lot better than, a lot. Quicker than you can train a police officer and that might be a, a something. And, and so as we're talking about budgets, Derek. Is there, when you're talking about positions and working with H R. Are there positions that you could hire as a social or mental health person? That it's, it's a different type of job description, but it includes that that person get hired on to be an E M P?
Yeah, Corbin, Corbin and I have had discussions about this, not even using them as an E M P as much as a social worker, like, like Chief Valentine was saying, a lot of the calls that we respond to. We show up for just a Band-Aid, you know, somebody's having a crisis or having a mental health problem. We show up, we transport them to the ER, they get discharged, a week later we're back there again, they have the same problem. And so in an effort to kind of reduce some of those lower acuity calls that we respond on. Corbin and I have talked about things and, and Chief Valentine, like, yeah, a social worker that when the crews respond. They can then refer that to an in-house social worker that can do all the follow-up on the backside. To help them get the help and the resources that they need and help reduce. Our medics going on things that truly aren't like medical emergencies and free them up for the things that, that they're best well trained to. To accommodate, so that, that is definitely something we've talked about and explored. And like Chief Valentine said, I, I, I don't know that was quite there to implement it. But that is something that I would definitely want on everybody's radar.
What, what steps can we do to get ready to start implementing that, steps we can do, you know, fairly immediately?
I promise, I, I, I will. Give me a couple of months, I'll sit down with Chief Maxfield, we've had some exploratory conversations and. And come back to you, uh, with, with some thoughts about how that might work out.
Cause I wanna get past the Band-Aids and get.
I agree.
Prior.
The same way the cops grants are defraying some of our up cost, upfront costs for these officers, we really do and are applying for other grants that can defray or offset. Starting up a program like that because there are those opportunities as well.
So, that, it's gonna, we can talk, we can have this conversation for several hours. But, but I did have a question, another question for Ken. Crossing guards, are all the equipment they need to keep them safe? I just, I drive past some of these crosswalks and I just see the little stop sign and stuff and thinking, they need bigger, brighter. Uh, you know, lights and flashing bells and whistles to get people to slow down across walks.
Yeah, the stop, the stop signs, the stop signs are balanced by weight, I mean, you'd be surprised what goes into this. Figuring the right size of.
Yeah, I believe.
Stop sign and that's, that's one area where our motors folks support our crossing guards. I had a, I'm gonna end with this unless you're, I had a great experience of the day, somebody was coming through the school zone. And I was right there, I'm in an unmarked car, so you know, I pulled him over. That's two crossing guards at, at Seventieth and Thirty-second, they were getting their kids on the corner to do the wave and cheer. I telegraphed, I said, ma'am, look over there, do you want their cheer, Dad? They're cheering that you're getting, you're just due for speeding past the crossing guards. Anyway, yeah, they, they do, we, you know, in the winter time, the ones that wanna wear them, we've got the. Crampons, the.
Micro spikes.
Spikes on there and, and reflective covers are reflective. We appreciate our crossing guards, thank you.
Any questions on the budgets specifically for the slide, Alan? To the expansion request, any questions on this, I think we've covered it.
I, I'm just, and it's not anything against. Ken or the police department. Philosophically, I'm not sure I like a ten-year contract. Um, because if something comes, 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 comes ahead that's bigger, better, faster, stronger. We're stuck on a long-term contract and, 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 and we saw what happened. I'm gonna throw this out, then I won't bring it up, only talk about the city quarter budget. But we, we, we had sterling publishers, we got stuck with A L T. And we never even got a chance to look at it, so I would just say that we need the. I'm just, I'm just a little bit leery of the ten-year contract and. If there's a way you can program that in to get out of it, if there's better, better things that come along.
But does a ten-year allow us to get it down to seventy?
That's, that was the, sort of the, yes, that was lynch bin, I, I will. Um, I'll tell you, a councilman Grant, you know, I'm a former Taser instructor and do a lot of. Work with, with those devices, um, they're predicting a ten-year technology life. For these things, Taser, when they come out with the developments, they're very smart people, very smart people. Um, they make it financially very attractive for you to trade in your, your devices. Um, how generous they'll be, because we, we really did.
Okay.
Uh, other departments are like, what the?
Yeah, that'll be.
Yeah, you guys negotiated pretty hard.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you so much.
Jeremy did.
Anything else to please from you on that, or are we going to?
Just tell those guys on the back row, you don't need to all leave just because we said that.
I was gonna say with the, with the Taser tens, they're significantly different than the, any product we've seen in a long time, this is one of the reasons why we jumped on it and. It, it's contracting, it includes one cycle of replacement, so it's actually two. And since they've been offering these programs, when the second five years come out, they're significantly below, they've traditionally been significantly below market. Then we're locked into that price, so we don't have, we know what we're gonna get for the ten years, so. I agree with you on the, the usual on the length of it, I just. Been watching what's come out of Taser in the last twenty years, this is significantly going to increase.
So Chief, you think in five years they'll be more expensive?
Oh, we would, in five years, are you kidding? Yeah.
They built some of that.
They're more expensive for hair, but if that makes you feel good. No, seriously, they didn't catch.
No, it doesn't make me feel good, I feel bad for.
I'm shocked, just shocked.
All right, so the next budget that you're gonna discuss is the fire budget, this one is easy.
I like easy.
Um, total change in the prior is like three percent. Um, their total budget is twenty-one point four percent of the general fund, so you'll see we have that little red five piece come out, next slide please. And, um, these are the expansion requests that are included in your budget, um, they requested two sets of power extrication tools. Um, they're included in the C I P equipment budget that's provided to you. And then they asked for eight hundred megahertz Motorola radios, between four and six, depending on how much they can get for that budget. Um, via administration of a time chief to a deputy chief and you can ask, um, Chief Maxfield about that. Uh, we funded the surviving spouse trust fund, which is required by state law now for us to fund, it's a hundred dollars a year. Per firefighter and per police officer. Um, that will go into a trust fund held by the state that will provide benefits to any surviving spouses of any public safety. Um, officer, whether it's police or fire that is killed, killed or in the line of duty, right, all right? And then, um, cancer health screenings for all of our firefighters, which is, um, something that's highly recommended as well.
We'll be providing that, yes, what are you talking about?
Why, uh, why is that not just within the, like, the. The healthcare budget for the city versus separate?
So that's, that's a good question and that's partly what we wanna explore with this, this funding. All firefighters are required by N F P A to have a physical every year that includes certain things that the N F P A outlines. Um, we're finding there's cancer rates in firefighters are. We're finding there's cancer rates in firefighters are much higher than the general population. And obviously, if we can catch them sooner, it's gonna not only prolong their lives and give them time with their families, but it's also gonna reduce the cost of the city when it comes to insurance premiums and things like that. What we initially proposed this money for is there's a cancer test out there, it's a blood test that a lot of firefighters have been using that detects like over 40 different cancers. Now, there's some false positives occasionally and there's things that need to be followed up on, but that test, as we've negotiated with the company, is about $650 per firefighter. Our thought process is that we can take this money and have it as an ongoing thing where every five years, 20 of our firefighters, so about 20%, will get that test and it'll just kind of rotate, so not, the whole department won't be getting it every year, we don't feel that that's quite necessary. But every five years, everybody will have an opportunity to take this test. Now, one of the other things that we've talked about with this money, there's a lot of things going on at the state level, there's a task force down at U F R that's looking at firefighter cancer prevention and testing and, and we're hoping to do some great things with that. But one thing we also talked about was whether or not that 13,000, if, when we renegotiate our contract with you, if you help for our firefighter physicals, if it would be more beneficial or we get more bang for our buck to include different cancer screenings that they can perform when the firefighters go. And I don't know how that would play out, I don't know how much that would cost. But bottom line is, we wanna, we wanna protect our firefighters, we want to find cancers early and hopefully get treatment. I'll just tell you really quickly, this task force that's gonna be working on cancer stuff, they, there's a clinic down in Arizona that focuses just on identifying firefighter cancers. And they took six firefighters from here in the area down there with them. And the night before, when they were at dinner, they're like, you know, statistically, one of us is probably gonna have a positive finding. Five of the six firefighters had positive findings. Out of those five, three of them were malignant and the other two were benign. But those three that were malignant are now seeking treatment, they had zero symptoms, have no idea that they had anything going on, so that's the kind of thing that we wanna, you know, obviously, we caught it early enough with those and we wanna do the same for our firefighters.
So Chief, I have a question, and I don't know what show it was, but it was San Francisco Fire Department and they were talking about your fire gear that you wear and that perhaps the current stuff contributes to cancer and there's something new that's better. What do you know about that and how do you explore it?
As far as the actual materials, I'm, I'm not aware that like the nomex causes, potentially everything causes cancer, but the difficulty with the turnouts is that they get soiled with those carcinogens on fires and then they don't always come out. So when our guys are wearing them, and then on top of that, they're working in a hot, you know, difficult environment where they're sweating a lot, which opens their pores and those things are absorbing into their bodies. So some departments, you're seeing a push throughout the country and, and some departments here in the valley have even done it, where they're purchasing two sets of turnouts for each firefighter, so that when one set gets dirty on a fire, they can immediately put it out of service and get it cleaned, have a different set. It used to be in the old days that that was a badge of honor. Have dirty turnouts and a dirty helmet, show that you were a firefighter. That's not the way we think anymore. It's, it's as much as we can reduce our exposure to those, those harmful chemicals, we're trying to.
And what's the average cost of a turnout?
About $3,500 right now.
For?
Per, yeah.
And we only have one for ours.
We have one.
And you feel like maybe if we had two, it would be helpful?
Um, I, I, yeah, I think it would be helpful, I think anything that we can do to reduce the risk that our firefighters are facing is helpful.
Have you heard about a new material that they're making?
I have, Chief Maxwell, have you?
I was just trying to look it up really quick and it's, there's some of the known cancers, the P F, P F A S materials like the, the cancer things that are in it, so it's just some of those legacy products that they've now determined may have that in it. So, it's all preliminary at this point, it's nothing that's super, it's like, you can really get some data on it yet, but they are looking into it. It's just the chemicals that are sometimes baked into some of the materials that we could all wear, like the plastic bottles, they, they, some of them had known cancer things, so that's what they're looking into and stuff like that.
Well, I'd love to know how much it would cost to get a set of that or three or four firefighters.
What's the, what's the?
10 years.
10s?
Yeah, turnout's pretty good for, they've got a shelf life, they've got a, a life of 10 years.
332,000.
That's a 35.
How do you currently handle washing the turnouts when there's not a replacement?
We, we have commercial washers, you have to wait till the end of your shift. So if they get a fire at the beginning of their shift, they're gonna wear those dirty turnouts for the next 48 hours. Then when they're going off duty for their four days off, they put them in a big commercial washer and dryer that we have at our stations. They get them cleaned, they either have to come back in and take them out and dry them and do that, or have one of the other firefighters do it.
How often are they needing to use their turnouts more than once in a ship?
290.
Yeah, I don't know, it's hard to say, I mean, it's not. It depends, if they, if they get a fire earlier in the ship, then they may wear them again. If they go on an extrication or some other kind of fires. Some shifts are really busy and others not so much, but.
Yeah.
I think there's, so there are there four of us that would be supporting one of those many for that.
I think too, I don't, Zach's doing the.
It's $3,500, that's 290 grand for.
Yeah, we did, we did actually put in for a grant last year to get turnouts and we didn't get that.
You know, that's something you're looking for, Chief?
I'm always looking, you know, I, it's hard, I, I wanna be fiscally responsible. I know there are a lot of needs of other departments in the city, I know the fire department was well taken care of last year with some other things that we had. But I do, I, I look at one firefighter that ends up with cancer.
You have to support the $300,000.
And that's, yeah, that's devastating for them and their family.
The difference is one-time money versus.
That's right, it's one-time money, yeah, we have it.
It is, it is and it isn't, it's one-time money for the initial upfront.
Yeah.
Ten years from now, you buy it again out of one-time.
Right, that's what I'm saying is, if you do it, now you're, now you're perpetuating, replacing two sets of turnout, turnout gear, not one.
Yeah, but.
Just be aware.
But that kind of, that kind of replacement can always come out of one-time money, it should be $30,000 a year, right? But advertised over 10 years or, or $60,000 a year.
Right, it's, yeah, if you think about it, like, you know, take the total cost of, by the life of the.
We'll just take Alan's somewhere.
There's your $30,000.
See, I mean, I'm just thinking that if you bought some, just you're probably in the middle of a life.
We, yeah, not everybody gets their turnouts at the beginning of the 10 years. So what we try to do is, we're on a rotation that every year we try to replace.
One of the, one of those gets rotated and we buy a bunch now. 10 years from now, it's, it's just another one-time expense, no big deal.
No big deal.
I mean, it's a one-time expense.
To me, that's a life person, that's, that's, that's a human thing.
Chief, we've been told a lot in this budget discussion, it doesn't matter what we allocate the money for, you get to decide how to spend it. So if we gave you another $300,000, would you spend it on turnouts, please, and not?
The difference here would be, would be loaded into C I P as a specific line item and C I P is.
Yep, just to make sure you don't want to spend it on like fired animal acts or something. Besides, besides this, so this, Corbin, I'm gonna put you more on the spot with this. Denise, I think you answered my question yesterday. We know that the tiller truck's gonna be our, our, and, but we have that money programmed into fleet, fleet replacement, correct? And so the money's gonna be there in fleet replacement, so if we need to start buying the truck now so that it gets delivered in 52 months, the money's gonna be there for that, correct?
We program $200,000 a year for truck replace, light fire truck.
So that's, that's good to know. And then do we have an anticipated timeframe on when we're thinking about starting to build the fire station at 90th and 67?
No, not till development gets out, it's out there and beyond and there's really a need right now. 54 and 55, which are the two closest stations to that area, those are also the two slowest stations. And so, as, but like securing the land for it was very, very valuable. So we have our spot and we have our plan. When the, when the development comes and when the impact fees from that development have accrued and so.
So, but here's my question, have we developed a model that we know when that's gonna occur? What, I mean, what's the, what's the critical threshold for the numbers out there? What, what I don't want to, what I don't want to do is say, well, we're waiting for the numbers and then, oh my gosh, we found them and now we got, now we're in panic mode. What I'm wondering is, do we have a model to say what we need to have built in Jones Ranch or Jones Ranch slash, uh, terrain slash Mike Jones property in Southwest? Do we have any sort of model that says, once we get to this point, that tru, that, that trigger, that's the trigger to say, we better start looking at it?
No, uh, not, not formally, no. The Chief and I talked often about how do we incrementally prepare for that transition, so we're not coming to you in a single budget saying, we need a dozen new firefighters all at once, because we need to open a new station all at once. So, we, we talk about all the time, how are we, how are we incrementally preparing for the addition of another station? So that when the time is right, the move is incremental in terms of staffing instead of coming all at once, yes. But what, as far as the model, the trigger, like certain call volumes or certain.
We have a response time, right?
Things like that. Yeah.
But that's an overall, like, it, you know.
Uh, we haven't done that formally.
But I, but, so what I'm suggesting is, is that, and, and we're not in crisis mode yet, but what we ought to do is over the course of the next couple of years, develop that model so that we know that when there's, there's this critical and, and as we, as we start to see the, the growth from, it's from, you know, the building permits and those kind of things, that as we see the numbers, there's this critical mass that says, okay, we added an extra thousand houses, we need to start the first firefighter and the second, because we know that the increment gets us to the 11 firefighter, you don't want to go with that.
Yeah, perhaps that would be a great model. You want to add a paper written up about it?
Because they've already said they're, they know, I, I don't know, I don't know what you're asking.
Well, I, I just think if it's not written down, then nobody knows what the hell is going on, it's just, it's conversation, right?
That'd be, that'd be a good thing for that intern to do.
Yeah.
Want it written down, because I've talked to the Chief and the Chief before him and they know, that's why they bought the land, so they know that, yes.
Well, we all know that there's gonna be houses out there, but we've got a plan for when that hits into the budget and know when those, those are.
So if you want a written plan, that's what.
I just wanted, I just want to know what the triggers are and not just say, well, we've talked about, we think we know. And, and we'll come to you when we think we know, there, there ought to be some triggers that.
Well, I, I think there are some triggers, we've got survey results, we've got average response times, which I'm assuming is broken down by fire station. And as those start changing, those are gonna be triggering.
What's the change that triggers?
Well, it's in the code, like our response time is in the code. And if that starts getting changed, we know that we're not up to code in what we've already set a standard for.
Well, Councilor, I like the idea of having some idea though, that once the 3,000th building permit is pulled west of, you know, 56th West, we know that, okay, that's about the time we need to start.
Well, you could do, you could do a combo of police and fire.
You know, it's a, it's, I, I think the model and the study is, is worthwhile, we have not done.
That's, that's all I'm suggesting is, put that, we have something like that together, we have a better, you know, we talked about five-year plans with the budget and those kind of things. We have a five to 10-year plan for the fire department, it won't catch us off-guard and we'll be financially ready for it.
Yeah.
Okay, we, so we mentioned, we talked around the idea of, of $300,000 for, for next turnout for the entire department. Is that the best spot that we can ever spend $300,000 on in the city? It might be, it might not be, but I kind of like the idea that every year we kind of pick one of these kind of, I want to call it a pet project, it's kind of a pet project, and we go, you know, we're gonna do something a little bit extra for somebody to, to make something better. Now, is it the absolute top best, we can argue about what the best is, what the best isn't, but we kind of, we kind of take something like that every year.
Where's the one-time ones coming from?
One-time money.
One-time money.
C I P.
I'd like that, Chief, oh Chief Maxwell.
Why don't you spend it, let's go.
If that, if, if he just had a blank check for 300,000, he could write it to whatever, would it be to those turnouts or would there be another priority within your department that is more important to you as Chief?
That, that would be, I think that would be a number one. Okay, it's always been something that I felt is a little bit cost prohibitive, especially as a, like, just to buy 80 or 90 sets. But I, I have seen even other departments here in the valley are, are using that as a recruiting tool, saying, day one, you'll have two sets of turnouts.
Prior to the Band-Aid, that's where I wanna, that's where my mindset is, is let's get before the Band-Aids. And that to me is an important aspect.
If you've got a second set of turnouts, do you have storage, do you need, like, like it's one thing to buy the turnout, but the turnout requires a little bit with it, is the, is the money for the turnout? What other, what other things come with that or what other needs come with that? We would have to look at that, we would probably need some increased locker space. Each firefighter has a locker that they keep their stuff in. Obviously, if they're storing two sets, we have to figure out a way to do that.
I do have another question, on the survey results, it's an 81.8% on resident satisfaction.
I'm sorry, it's not.
Well, I wanted to know where, do you have a goal to increase that? And if so, where are your thoughts, like how we can help support that?
I, I do, I mean, like Chief Valentine said, obviously 100%. I, I want everybody to be happy with the fire department and feel like they're getting a quality service and, and getting their money's worth. I think one of the areas that I have focused on a lot, that I've tried to, and I feel like we've made tons of progress, is just our community outreach and public, public education that Becky's been doing, a lot of the CPR classes, babysitting classes. You know, the, the junior firefighter academies, those have waiting lists every year and we have to turn away so many kids that are part of that, and we use that as a recruiting tool, tool as well. She's created a junior, I can't remember, I can't get that program, which is more of the high school age. That's, we get them exposure to firefighting and try to break them, so.
Is there a way that we can support expanding that? I mean, not, obviously this, but maybe down the road, is something that we need to, to, to keep in mind?
Yeah, one of, one of my longer range goals for that is, we, we hired Becky, we created that position and hired Becky a couple of years ago. She's done an amazing job, she's starting to get to the point where she's overwhelmed. She's created the programs, but delivering them is hard.
She needs help with the support.
And, and we've tried, I've given her direction as well, that I want her to start focusing on community risk reduction. Like, like finding out how many, what, what calls are we responding on the most? Is it falls, can we do fall prevention stuff to help elderly people install handrails next to their shower or whatever? And so, she's tasked with a lot, but she's at a point where she's got, she's got programs built, but it's really taxing on her to be the, the delivery of that. And, and we've, I've talked to Corbin as well, we're trying to pass some of that off on our firefighters and that's where the overtime budget comes in, because we can bring them back and say, you're gonna help with this camp for the week. But that is, that is an area in the future that I would like to pursue.
My next question, on the average response times, and I'm, I'm coming from obviously Station 55, where they're really struggling on that because of where that intersection is. And it's in our code, so obviously we have to be very aware of that. And one of the questions, because that was one of the, when I saw that, that was my first, my eye went there, because I, I hear the complaints and I hear the frustration. Is it worth looking into having a special light where if they have a call, like a priority call, they, they can click it so it goes red so they can get out of there?
We, we do have that, it's called Opticon. And we, it's, there's a little transmitter that's hooked on all the emergency apparatus that transmits an invisible beam and as you get closer to the intersection, it makes them all go red.
Yeah, or even just something simple to get out of that intersection, because that's where they get stuck.
That potentially, I don't know how that would work with like a roundabout, it's right there.
Oh, it's not really a roundabout, I think it was talked about.
Oh, yeah, the roundabouts a little bit.
Yeah.
Roundabouts, supposed to go there for 60.
60, yes, they can't get out of there, yeah.
Well, I, I will say, I did work at a fire station, we had one in Sandy that had, it had that traffic light.
That one little light for the fire station to get out.
It honestly didn't get used there. It required a manual push as you got in the rig and it went for about 30 seconds and.
And this is, this is why I wanted to ask, I mean, is there something that we? And this is, this is why I wanted to ask, I mean, is there something that we can help support matching what we have in our code?
Opticon being installed on the traffic lights, it's helpful, but that's oftentimes a used stuff.
Well, but, but that is a unique situation, because there's no light there, they just can't get out, because the traffic is so bad. On seventy eight hundred, and it's only gonna get worse, and so knowing it's only gonna get worse, I wanna be proactive on what we can do to mitigate. That. Seventy eight hundred, seventy. Well, yeah, we, which is, I'm gonna make. But in the short term, but they still can't get out of sixty four hundred or on, on a sixty four hundred.
You know, the, the one thing I would.
Right, there, there is, yeah, in the me, yeah.
The one thing I would, that I think you bring up a great point, as seventy eight is widened, it's gonna push closer to that station on the apron.
Yeah.
And when traffic is stopped in, right directly in front of the fire station, they won't be able to get out, so. We may need to put painting or whatever, I, I don't know if you guys have noticed on Fortieth West.
I've seen that.
Jordan Fire Station, it has some painting on the road that says, do not stop in this area.
So can we just make sure the traffic.
Engineers design way, fire trucks get through that roundabout.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like getting right out of the doors, like if the traffic stops.
But yeah, when it, hand me, keep clear of the evening, right? Give me twenty month and a half an hour on the.
But no, and can we make sure that this is on, on a.
So Derek, I have two questions. I, you, you mentioned that the firefighter's annual physical is done through a contract through U of U. My question would be, now that we have the employee clinic. Would, would it, can we do something with the employee clinic? To have the employee clinic do those help, do those um, annual.
We, we've talked about that, um, couple of issues with it, number one, the NFPA requirements are very specific. And the U of U is an occupational health, that's who we've done the R and P with, is an occupational health specialty. So that's, that's the biggest thing.
And then the second question, same question I asked in. Second question, have you thought about any sort of reserve program? That you can have E N Ts or uh, those kind of qualified people that can. Volunteer a shift or two to help cover when you're short.
We have discussed it, we, we, I would like to do like a more in-depth, the hard part is it becomes so transient. And, you know, people come for a year or two, and to outfit them in uniforms or whatever, and then they leave. It becomes harder to manage, but it also is a great way, a cheaper way to bolster the forces that we have available, so.
Well, that's one thing I brought up to Kelvin and I brought up with Bobo about, you know, right now the training is all at U of U for the most part. And for someone like my husband, who would love to be a firefighter, but he can't quit his day job. And so Bobo and I wanted to sit down and talk and, and discuss something of, where a night class local, where we can get those. Um, adults who would love to transition over, but don't have the means to do so.
Yeah, there, there was a program in West Valley that was like that. Um, it was put on by a firefighter, it's like, I don't know, there was an agreement, but. It, it, it's difficult because so much equipment is needed, that's where like EUPHRA is able to do it. Because some of the, the training requires that you have hoses, that you have fire engines, that you have all that stuff, and so it's hard for like a local agency to just say. We're gonna put on a fire academy, it can be done, it, it certainly can be done.
Could it, could it be done, could it be done with something like Salt Lake Community College? And we approach some of our legislators and say. Uh, maybe it's time for Salt Lake Community College or the technical, the, whatever the regional technical center is here. That they start running that kind of a program, and we see if they can't help fund it.
Right, currently all the funding goes to EUPHRA, because, well, the Utah Fire and Rescue Academy, which is.
All the way.
Under the umbrella of U of U, that's where that funding goes for firefighters, so that's really the only like state sponsored. Fire training school, kinda like Post, where the, the funding goes there, firefighters get their certifications through them.
Let's keep talking, I think we can find something, yeah, yeah. Thank you for letting us brilliant.
Thank you, sorry.
So no, no questions or concern on this?
Nope, perfect.
And so on this, it, I, is the, the majority is to support a second. Um, to fund C I P one time, second set of turnout gears, okay.
And C I P guarantees that it's funded.
Yes.
Not, hey Derek, are the power extraction tools Milwaukee or Delaware? They, extrication.
Yeah.
They're not either of those, they're, they're homalchro, they're. Cause I know you guys had some Milwaukee there for a while.
Oh, hey, real quick, before we move on. I, how late do you guys wanna go?
I'm, sorry to get popped out.
Thinking about nine thirty, that's not gonna happen.
Concur.
Depends on how the conversation goes about, um, must be.
Public services, our total change from the prior year is six point seven percent, you can see it's. Twelve and a half percent of the budget, the green piece applied there, because it was like grass colors. Uh, we've got the parks budget with five point six million dollars, facilities at one point seven million dollars. Events at two point two million dollars, cemetery, and then public services administration. And then the next slide. And this would be the expansion request from all of those departments, so. Uh, full-time events assistant, um, the addition of some, um. Events in, in different areas, and then, um, two uh, items that were asked for to support the parks. Um, department, but also support our streetlights and our strong.
How about some forestry attachment?
Oh, that's so cool.
No, no, I can explain that, it's actually a really cool, what it is, it's an attachment. Uh, for tree removal, it goes on a bobcat or some type of loader that we, uh, our existing equipment is. Really, I have a tree, you know, you'll remove a tree, especially some large trees, you have to get up there, cut it limb by limb. Slowly cut it down, this is, it's got several rotating grind discs, and it just, within minutes, you can pop the bottom. Uh, so our storm dryer can use it in some of our, uh, some of the ditches that they can't access and.
You gonna rent that out too?
We showed the video, it's funny, it's, it's pretty impressive, so it really cuts back on time and as well as safety, and arbiters, it's, it's a pretty dangerous profession, so. But it really helps, it removes the stumps as well, so we don't have to rent stump grinders every time we run a, cut down a tree, you have to rent a stump grinder, this, this stuff, of course.
I remember the teenager saying tree climber is a job in the water ads, and I'm like.
It's pretty impressive. Like a bobcat, so it's some of, yeah, it's just, it's an extra attachment. I draw three hours.
If, you, you look it up online on YouTube, it shows a video, and we were like, what, I mean, so.
Which I was just prepared as chief all the time.
It was cool. Alright, so this is your time to discuss anything in Corey's budget.
Let's hold on, Corey's budget. I have a question. Were we gonna talk about cemetery expansion in the, in the cemetery? To go to the south.
Added that.
Yeah, that's in there, it's in there, it's in our capital project, uh, our C I P.
It's in the C I P.
Okay, so yeah, the first thing, I can answer to it, we're asking for a little, a mausoleum. It's columbarium. Columbarium, yeah, we're going back and forth, which is, provides up to, to two hundred and fifty inches that we can for, uh, store earths. So it offers an additional service that we don't currently have, we are running out of space, but we've had a lot more requests.
We do have that land around the building that we can expand.
And so we've looked into that, to add another acre, I mean, it's gonna cost upwards ten to fifteen million, and it's gonna be a.
Really?
There's six.
For an acre?
Yep, in order to get utilities right out, the cost of everything now, it, it, it's expensive, and it'll be six to seven year.
You can drag a hose, it'll be much easier.
My recommendation would be looking, uh, whether we wanna purchase land elsewhere, or just some, some of the land swap and, and.
Well, we did have. Station area plan has that being built in. With the cemetery.
Yeah, we did ask in the, um, survey of residents. Uh, if residents support expanding, um, cemetery services to either an additional site or. Or an expansion of the site, once the current cemetery, uh, is built, what's the word we use, build up? Once there's no longer bake, once the word.
Reaches capacity.
Reaches capacity. So, uh, that would be very, uh, that would be very helpful too, for this discussion about expanding the cemetery.
I, I just wanna make sure, I mean, we, we've got the station area plan, right, it's got that filled in. Um, that, that we're making, that it's not just a lot for, you know, a gravel lot, and that we eventually clean that up. Make it, and if that means that we put the, the, the mausoleums back on there, we, we put concrete sidewalks and stuff. Instead of grass and those kind of things, I, I'm just looking for creative things to fill that in as we get, you know, as we move.
Cost there, I see, we, we'd have to really relocate some of our parks, uh, storage buildings that are back there, demolish those, which is a lot of the cost, and it really. But from our calculations, it would buy us about an extra six years at the most, because it would fill up, that, the rate that we're putting people into the ground, I'd say that way, but. It wouldn't, it would last about six years, and we'd be back to, okay, now we need to, we don't have any more room to expand, we need to look else. I could, I could be better prepared than that when talking to the. Yeah, combined with another city, so let's say South Jordan, West Jordan, have a combined cemetery out west. I know we've talked about even whether we wanna try to get more of a privatized cemetery, and a lot of people have done that. With some papered ones up there.
Yeah.
Because the one on Redwood up here is gonna be full pretty soon too, isn't it? Yeah, but it, it doesn't get near, we only have a couple burials a year into that cemetery, it, it really. No, the one is. I know it's not ours, but they have the same issue, they're.
The difference, they're really. Memorial States and West Jordan Cemetery though is.
A lot of money.
Well, it is, but they do double stack too.
We don't.
Why don't we double?
Well, I don't know, do we? We can go, right? Yeah, water table, that's the issue there, we're, we're still close to the.
What about a ninetieth, we're not close to the water table there.
No, we can look at that, I, we have looked at that as.
Is that one on Ford Street?
Yeah, next to the, next to the community college there.
And that would be, yeah, the expansion capability with some of our land, it's done.
Yeah.
Now, can we build no water cave there?
And there's a lot of unmarked graves there, but we're not sure we're all of them, we're not sure we're at all of that.
We're trying to get creative with the columbarium, if you don't have anywhere in the city where.
Cause I know Salt Lake Community College, on some of the land on the corner, could we move a columbarium into? And go buy the land from there?
Yeah, they don't, columbariums don't take up a whole lot of space, and so this is the first one we're gonna be installing. Yeah, where's that?
Well, that's close enough to the travel station for high density.
To the I O G.
Okay, are there any questions about the expansions or, um?
We're talking expansion of the cemetery budget, not expansion of the cemetery.
Yeah, not expansion of the cemetery, the budget for public services.
So on the thrones, that is for this coming, what's that, next year? That would be for this cup, this coming, um, the forty thousand would come, we've already put down a twenty thousand deposit, thousand dollar deposit for this year, which is money. That we were able to save from this last year's budget due to purchasing equipment rather than having to rent it, and we were able to reuse it, so we were able to put that deposit down. So what it would be, would be for the twenty thousand that would be due upon execution of this year's, and then the twenty thousand dollar deposit for next year's. That's, it's just, it's really tricky with the, the bet being July the fourth, so.
Right after the starting pistol.
Small, small questions, on the seven, on, okay, on page two fifty nine. Cemetery search to get replacement or transfer price difference due to block cost between resident and non-resident. Resident thirty dollars, non-resident six hundred, can you explain?
Sorry. That costs to me. Council made changes last year's fee schedule, that, um, to preserve, I think it was, um. I think it was led by council member, council member.
Vaguely recognize.
Let's, the, the council changed the fee schedule to preserve the space, buy a little more time by, uh, making it. Um, less expensive for residents and more expensive.
I wanna check that number, that feels wrong. Weird, that's why I did, I recommend, I remember the conversation, but that is a.
Thirty and sixty.
It's probably thirty and fifty. That's what I think, so let, thank you, because I don't, I think that's a typo on our teams.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause that's a little high for us. That's why I was like, wait.
We're gonna gouge the non-residents.
Thank you, no, that's a, yeah. Okay, thank you. Good, good catch. I can never imagine a city. I know, I'm like, seeing high.
Uh, we're, we're, should be, have three of those.
And are you, is it a company or going with the renting?
Yeah, we'd be renting equipment, um, we've been working with, actually, um, part of the, I don't know the name of the organization, but we meet monthly with other events. Uh, managers in other cities, and we're, we're actually working to maybe pull some money together to purchase these supplies, and then lend them out city to city.
I can have a, an inflatable fourteen foot screen, I don't know what size you're looking at, but.
A lot of them are a little bit larger than that, but some of the smaller parts, that would be a great option.
I don't, I just, it's a weird thing my wife bought at one time that. No, I, she, she bought it for COVID, thinking we'll use that in the backyard, but those of you that heard where I live. My backyard doesn't fit a fourteen foot screen, so why she bought that, I don't know.
We would love to be able to purchase them.
I, I was gonna, I was just gonna let you have it, but it might be small for your use.
Here is, here, here's one more question. And I, and I hit the mayor up with this one, so he'll know this, coming. I know that we wanna improve, that, that we're looking at, so see, Corbin mentioned this feasibility of doing some things for the rodeo. But what things can we do to the rodeo arena? You and I have talked about the area out in front of the concession stand, cleaning that up. And, and paving it, maybe put some park benches in or some, or some picnic tables in. The south end, uh, down where we park food trucks, probably ought to be paved or done something. What are things that we could do at the rodeo arena now? That would not be super expensive, but that would also. Uh, create a better user experience for the, uh, the rodeo attendees, and the monster truck and all those others. That, that would make the experience better for them, do we have any idea of any of those kind of things that we could do?
Yeah.
That are reasonably inexpensive?
Yeah, a couple of, you know, especially with a concrete pad, more, um. Seating and permanent seating for people to eat food around the concessions area rather than having to stand around, that's something we're looking at. The other thing we're now looking at, and it's something, um, a previous city I worked at, we kinda had the same issues with. Um, we wanted to get additional seating, and so we actually, there's actually companies out there, you can rent temporary bleachers, they'll come in, they'll set it up, you can rent skyboxes. Um, Harriman City is currently doing that, and, uh, we're gonna go visit there really this year to see how they're liking it, and that's something. We did it at Pleasant Grove City, and then we charged, uh, we, it was a, really, really a no charge, we, we had to pay to rent the bleachers, but then we. Pass that cost on in selling tickets, but we were able to charge it an extra cost that, that about seven, eight years down the road. We'd saved enough, we were able to make that permanent, and so that's something we're really looking at right now, whether it's more skyboxes, um, additional seating. Through you renting that from private vendors, so those are the two areas we're looking at right now, but a lot of it is. Better, uh, better areas for, for concessions, like you can sit, like some shade structures would be, would be great.
Do, do you have a, do you have any idea what any of the costs would be, or? Could you put some costs together over the next couple of weeks that would give us a ballpark? If we decide that we wanna do that, we would know what it would cost?
Yeah, and we're currently looking at that right now and working on those costs. Are you asking for this coming rodeo or for next year?
Uh, it'll obviously come at the budget starting.
I'm just saying, I don't think we have time to.
We don't have time to.
No, we, no.
But you're, you're, you would, you would, what I'm hearing, councilman Green, what I'm hearing you say though, I think is. You'd love to see some costs on this, so you can consider it for next, the FY twenty five budget.
I'm talking about this, I'm talking about this budget.
That's what I mean, the FY twenty five budget, that is this budget.
So if, that they would be.
So that it could be worked on for the twenty twenty five western standard.
Exactly.
Also, I think we missed the boat for this. Yeah, I'm working late for this year.
Yeah, as much as I'd like to do it for this year, I don't think we're gonna get there.
One of the things we're also studying, in addition to just facility improvements, we have this asset. I desperately wanna get more value out of the asset, so, how do we get more use out of it? How do we use that rodeo grounds more often than just?
How do we get more use out of it, how do we use that rodeo grounds more often than just Western Stampede?
Ice rink.
Ice rink.
Right, so we're looking into that, we actually have found some, since our conversation last week, found some entities that do temporary ice rinks, uh, and we're contacting them.
Temporary, no, it would wanna be permanent.
Well, I mean, temporary that, it's not, you, you put it in in the winter and then in, in the summer it's rodeo.
No, I would like, it would be worth it.
We're looking at, anyways, we're, we're looking into those things.
The rodeo thing and the, add to that, you're talking about a, a different building.
Yeah, the building, you're talking, closing the rodeo grounds and. Anyways, we're looking into those things, it was right now, so, yes, good, all good thoughts.
On, on something like, okay, the drone show, it's in addition to the fireworks?
Yes, and so one of the, the feedback we received over the last past couple of years, I haven't been here, but our rodeo committee received a lot of feedback of our ticket prices were the same every night, but only one night had fireworks. And so we were kinda looking, okay, maybe we'll increase the cost that night, or why don't we do, you know, first it was, let's do fireworks every night. No, exactly, neighbors, dog, it, it can be.
They're following all of that.
So after the success of the drone show this last winter, um, that's, that's what we chose to do with, we had a lot of good feedback, it was.
So this is a resident driven.
That's from the feedback we've received and, yeah.
And, and I'll, I'll add just, yeah, in, in support of what he's saying, is I went back and looked at the minutes, the council discussed in the works session, April of twenty-two.
Yeah, we were called, we couldn't do a drone show.
Well, at the time, the price, the price was quoted in the minutes of eighty to three hundred.
Yeah, and then that employee went to Salt Lake and did a good show.
And then, um, the council was not opposed to the mayor pursuing drones on a year-to-year basis, so that's kinda the background of why I think this is.
But I wanna know why it's on an ongoing cost, why is that?
Uh, just for you, uh, we could do it, that's just to fund it every year, I mean, if we wanna just say it's a one time for this next year, um, we could do that.
John, I know the prices, like now that more and more drone companies out there, the prices have obviously gone down.
I think the reason is because they have to have a contract for next year when we come here again. So, we, we do ongoing, then we're saying not only this year, but next year as well.
Yeah, but here's my problem, it, it's already in an events book, so we've already told the community they're doing it, but this body hasn't allocated the fund yet, so that kind of trouble the.
Did I respond, yeah?
And then I wanna know, um, what else up there, I wanted to know the justification for the increase for the rodeo purse.
Yeah, okay, first go to the, um, the drone show, the book, we, our hope was if we proposed the forty thousand, we get approved, we knew there'd be a chance, it, it may not get approved. Um, and so we have a contingency plan, if we don't receive funding for it, we can, we can fund it through other avenues of, you know, however, we don't wanna pursue that, it may reduce the quality of some other events, uh, whether that's what we rent and, and supply those events, but we, we know we can make it work, uh, and we have a contingency plan, which is why we went forward with that. And then, oh, sorry, in regards to, uh, decrease the rodeo purse, that's just to stay competitive, we, uh, work with our rodeo committee.
We should do more.
Yeah, it was our, we're losing bull riders, we're losing rodeo, uh, anyone that wants to compete, cause we just don't offer near the purse that other rodeos offer, especially on a July fourth event, where there's, that offers thirty thousand and we're offering seventy. So it's just to stay competitive.
So.
From the ball all the time.
So the twenty-two five hundred, that is what you guys feel is a good balance between what was for and what?
It puts us about right in the middle, not at the lowest, not at the highest either, so we're, we're not at the size of like an Old Blue Rodeo or that, yeah, we, we, we did want to go to that.
But we're still here at CA, right?
Yes.
My other question is, I remember the conversation and feedback from residents and, and then the conversation is about the, um, uh, entertainment stage. Do we have, are we doing more with that, or are we just gonna let it kind of, again, fade this year?
Well, they did do, they do have the bingo this year, but I, you know, I agree with you, I, I'd like to see a few more events, um, during the, the days in the park that are free. I think that, that right now what we got is we have rodeo, the carnival, and there's, and the food trucks, but everything costs and there's nothing to do for free except wander around, look at a few events, but I, I don't think.
The, the West Orange Larks also fits on a couple of concerts.
But, but as far as like having the entertainment stage during that Western Stampede, rodeo, carnival, things like that, brings more people to the events.
Yes.
And so for me, I, the ROI would be there because it's creating that community engagement, which is a huge part of our priority and, and our goals for the city, but I don't see that supporting the goals that we had set for events.
We, we do wanna get that in there, we, we talked about it, but we haven't got it yet. We would love to say, I mean, especially with our event staff, we would love more events, we would love.
Well, not because I'm, I'm going by the premise and the goals that we as a city set, and I wanna make sure we're supporting that, and to me, it having that entertainment stage is a big part of that.
I think part of that investigation of the full-time assistant is, in order to do more events, we, we've, we've got two people, we really need, we do need that third if we wanna do, if we wanna really increase our events, both in quantity and quality, we really need a third person.
Where does the stage go?
Lucky you've got your intern for this.
Where the? In the carnival area, it's always kind of been, has a, like a grassy part of the carnival area where the entertainment stage is.
And then.
And then COVID just kinda dismantled it.
The north section.
Is that something we can rent versus?
Well, no, we rent, no, we rent the stage, but we need the money for it, for one, not just the stage, but to bring in the acts, because not everybody's, we don't, they're not free, you know, bringing in some top-tier acts, who wanna come in, who then bring the people in because they're a top-tier act.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, and this may be something that we can, cause I, I, I would love to have an event stage. There is a park in St. George, and I don't even, what's the name of the park, Alan, the one that we went to that one?
Well, we have the concert that.
No, not, not Verge, that's the one where the barbecue was. Now, they're, they, they have the barbecue at a different park about three years ago that has that, they had the.
The中心park.
Yeah, that's the one. They have, they have, you know, a design and, and maybe it's something we need to relook at, was Veteran Park Master Plan, but the way they had the stairs and some elevation, they can use that for a stage in the middle of the park. And I, I think that that would be something that we really do need to take a look at with the master plan, it's how, and like Councilmember Jacob said, we, we need a stage. And is there a way to do some elevation with the stage to, that we can build that in, that's part of the park, but it's also a multi, you know, that we can use it for a stage and those kind of.
You know where the Cowboys parked their trailers? There was a master plan that showed them, the theater over there.
There's lots of.
There was a plan over there.
Yeah, I mentioned the, great, uh, Devonport, I, I was looking through ways that we can utilize detention basins in, in a lot of cities in Colorado, Denver particularly has a great, uh, entire design standard and one of them is, they have put the concrete steps with a little concrete stage in, inside of a detention base, as an amphitheater.
And by the way, we could change the detention basin over a veteran's park to a boat racing facility and have a little RV boats.
There we go.
There we go. Is this the right time to talk about the bond?
Um, I think that's in the CIP.
Okay, that's in the CIP, we'll talk about the bond.
Yeah, I just wanna bring that because that's a huge part of our purpose in the city and I just wanna make sure we're supporting the goals that we have, and to me, an entertainment stage is a huge part of that.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest, I, that's the first I've heard of it since I've been here in six months.
Maybe that's one of the things that we look at, bringing to you about next year's Western Stampede, right? Is how, what would you take?
But really, you should be bringing next year's to us now, right, because this is the budget that pays for next year.
That's the tough part, on expenses, it's the day that you use the service, I include it as a, a receivable or a liability. So if I pay this drone show, it's a receivable, cause they owe us service, I can't expense it until we actually receive the service. And that's, that's the challenge, right, it means it will be in the twenty-twenty-six budget in twenty twenty-five.
We, there was some, some, Councilman Whitelock, you mentioned frustration about presumption on the Fourth of July and, uh, Councilman Green, you mentioned the same thing, it, it is very, very hard for our staff to plan for the Fourth of July event, twenty twenty-four, when the budget doesn't get approved until, you know, late June twenty twenty-four, uh, we were talking about, how do we do this a little bit better, so we're not being presumptuous? So that we are leading and not lagging on our planning and our expenses, I think it'd be good if we were looking at Western Stampede plans, Western Stampede budgets, much earlier so that you can kinda authorize us to presume, leading into that, uh, leading into that summer month, because it is a very challenging type of month.
Well, that, that may not be a bad idea.
Well, and a lot of commitments are made in the summer.
Make, do the, do the Western Stampede budget in December, we all get the warm and fuzzy in December and then it's just a formality for this budget, when we do it, it just gets rolled up into this budget.
I think that, that would help us tremendously, tremendously, especially to CEO, we were, I appreciate hearing the support for this, cause it's something, yeah, we're, we're passionate about in society and we, we can see the benefit. So I think that's a great idea, if we could do something like that, you know, we talked about.
Any other questions for Cory?
Budget wise, how, you know, any questions, any concerns?
Well, if we're doing something, making sure we have something in December, um, this obviously needs to get adjusted when it comes to an entertainment stage or.
Yeah.
Next summer.
And speaking of throwing, you know, three hundred thousand here, three hundred thousand there for a long time project.
Harper. Sorry, so do I.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
I would love to know how much it would cost to put a small concrete stage, a permanent small concrete stage at Veteran Memorial Park.
Yeah.
Is it a million dollars, is it two million dollars, is it ten million dollars?
We'll all look into that, yeah.
Have that in there, get to work on this.
We, uh.
And let's think outside the box.
That's what we have, we have been working very hard on, um, Veterans Park Master Planning and bring back to you some, you know, for this part of a plan, it's this top, for this part of the plan, it's this cost, we, uh, this event stage in Veterans Park has not been part of the event, part of the thinking Yeah, it was all the priorities. Of the infrastructure for vets and what the cost estimates are, so we can add that, we're planning on bringing that back to you this summer here, pretty su- pretty soon.
And we, and, you know, we only have twenty-six opportunities a year to amend the budget, so, we can run the budget whenever we need to. We have more than, we have fifty-two, we, we have, we have three hundred and sixty-five opportunities. Yeah, I'm talking about already scheduled. Okay.
Okay, do we wanna get Brian up next, or do you wanna stop?
It is nine forty-two.
About halfway through the general fund.
Okay, um, next week's regular council meeting, we've kept the agenda short, so we can do this afterwards, um, at City Hall and this.
And the newly fixed air conditioning?
It's my opinion, man, don't jinx it.
It's working.
Ain't got going this afternoon.
It's working. Yeah, Allison sent us a picture and I said, don't jinx this.
You just hauled another leak.
Talking about now, talking about next year. Um, so we can do some of this after that, I mean, we, Frank, we can have these conversations as long as you want to have, no, you won't, council, one of the seven of us. But more, we can keep the focus on the budget. Here, we can talk about the priorities and the long-term things, and our retreat in January, which I don't know what we did. We should do that again, and hopefully, we can see what we talked about in the vital presentation. But, um, for staff that starts to come, please keep your presentations truncated, more quick overviews and, and then have the questions rather than protracted presentations with, you know. But keep in, keep in mind, our goal is, our job is to talk about policies with the budget, and that's why we went to a simplified budget, is to give us an opportunity to talk about our policies. So the more we get into the weeds, the more we're not doing that, so, backing back up to the policy is a good point. So just some things to keep in mind, just so we don't have to have extra special meetings, if we can avoid it. I have to prepare it as well. That's it, okay. I'll leave any of you to adjourn, I'm listening to adjourn. You can, you can do it with another chair. You know what?